Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Everybody in the audience, thank you for coming. We need your input on these things, so in a moment we will be starting the list and we will be at about three minutes at least. So speak fast or concisely. First entertaining a motion to approve the amendments.
Okay, we did have one change, but that's for now because Mr. Miller was, he was actually the one, I think, that I afforded my commission meeting. It's technically, I think, technically who that's, uh, for December meeting, so we didn't have that on the draft minutes there that we set out, so we provided those two to tag that in.
Okay.
And so that's what's on the list.
Okay, so one correction. With the correction, could we, Commissioner Miller? Second, Commissioner Holmes, all in favor? The approval of the February agenda. Don't think we have any changes. Okay, so. Motion to approve, Mr. Williams, second by Commissioner Miller. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That's unanimously. Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the local comment portion. We didn't have any, if I signed up for general local comment, it looked like everybody had signed up, signed up to speak for one, attend to either another, and so we didn't have anything. If you're ready, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to go to item number one.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, this is, uh, Plank, this is our January 20th Plan Commission Resolution 2401. I apologize to the Plank Commission, anybody in the audience that kind of heard this from already, we put through the district study session. Uh, what this is, is a resolution creating a new rural preservation zoning district, establishing the said district's purpose, bulk yard density regulations, establishing requirements for non-informant type of lots, making provisions for said districts, uh, said district related to lateral uses, and many of the zoning map to reflect the district's boundaries. And so for background, uh, again, back in January 2023, um, as we've had for many years, folks that have been involved in the planning commission process for the last five or six years know that most planning commission meetings, we have a local study session before we get to four o'clock. Uh, when we talk about policy changes and things that we're looking at and that kind of thing, trends and issues coming down from the satellite structure and that kind of thing. Um, again, back in January 2023, Plank Commission started pulling public study sessions specifically related to residential lot sizes in the county. Public study sessions on topic were held on the following days, January, February, March, May, June, August, September, December, and then one just a few months ago, this one in February. So I think that's the total of nine, nine public study sessions on this topic. Um, as far as the counties, on a resolution decided on this average as in the Galton Dudes and Missionville standard on February 8th, 2024. Uh, the draft text and map, as well as this public document that's on the screen, uh, was posted on the county's planning zoning website. Um, a copy of the draft text and map has been available on the public review in our office. Uh, we also posted this notice on the sunshine board, and so we've taken things, which is obviously work to inform the public about, about what's going on, what was proposed, it is a significant change, and we welcome the public, the public's interest in commenting. Uh, so, uh, a little more background, uh, over the course of those study sessions that I've talked about, what the Plank Commission did was really take a close look at the current, the county's current residential zoning regime, um, so how we handle residential zoning in the county. Um, extensive discussion, research was conducted into how current zoning standards relate to the regulations of the county's 2035 comprehensive plan, uh, which as the Plank Commission knows, was adopted by the Southern County Regional Planning Commission and the Southern County Commission in 2010. And so, uh, we did have some discussion, we did discuss commerce, initial zoning, commercial, industrial, that kind of thing. Uh, there does seem to be consensus that there is a very significant shortage of commercial and industrial zoning, uh, zone, commercial industrial, these zones and property in the county. Um, I think, uh, peak time development and facilitating that kind of growth is something that this Plank Commission, I don't know if you're too far out of my own, I think, something that this Plank Commission scores, but, uh, we didn't necessarily get into that here, I think we focused on the planning official maintenance or for the residential zoning side of things. And so that's, that's what we took a closer look at, especially as it relates to the county's comprehensive plan. And so, from review, as we look through the county's complaint, um, we, we did note that the county's longstanding approach to residential zoning was not desirable or sustainable. Um, so there's two criticisms that the complaint really lays out at our current zoning. Basically, that most parcels in the county can be divided into point nine two acre lots is the first criticism that has. Uh, what it says is that it encourages this sprawl, sprawl and development pattern, doesn't consider the topographic constraints to the center of the county where you have the ridge, uh, it doesn't incentivize development, those are developing services, um, near to the cities, and so that is criticism. And another one that's number two there is, uh, is, uh, we have an item called visit near the seating and that's by each teen type of lots, where they got created years and years ago, they could never meet current standards. Um, our zoning's never mattered way to really address those. And so that, that's kind of an insight for later in the day on the commercial stuff that we're going to need to look at in the future. Um, again, the residential side of things, it's, it's what has been looked at most closely so far. So this is the current zoning map, but right, um, most of the counties currently zone the rural residential, which allows 40,000 square foot lots everywhere, uh, from the main town to the, to the government area, pretty much, uh, fifty, these big dollar apartments, that's the number of lot size. And so, uh, although the complaint is about fourteen years old, um, it was noted that a lot of stuff that people were talking about back then, we're still talking about today. And so, uh, same comments, Plank Commission, folks around the Plank Commission now seem to, uh, seem to have some of the, the same thoughts, or hear from their constituents some of the same thoughts. Um, and what the complaint says is that, you know, the, the way the land is being consumed and growth is not really sustainable necessarily across the county. What it says is it alters the landscape and, uh, the entire county could be basically consuming thousands of point nine two acre lots. Um, it, it reads agricultural land is a danger within the county. And then, of course, you have your, you know, water quality and that's a top graphic concern and that kind of thing, so we'll sit on that. We, we've gone over that in study sessions pretty significantly. Um, it goes on to say, uh, the counties and its municipalities' current zoning regulations, um, really didn't help kind of create the problem, I guess you'd say, or the, the complaint does look like there is one. Uh, but they don't generate the current land consumption patterns under county, which is not necessarily sustainable where you have the city in the city and the county in the country necessarily. Um, and so what the complaint says is continuing with patterns, land and policy is the way they, they have been for the last fifty years or so, yields undesirable results expressed by any residents, it's just training infrastructure, also more damage, rural use sheds, more traffic congestion, threat natural resources. And so that's what the complaint says, really about the, the issues, and I think a lot of that is still relevant today as part of what, what people in the community talk about. Um, and with the issues in traffic and, uh, farm handling and kind of used up and that sort of thing. So I saw that everybody in the downtown, I'm sure the, the Plank Commission does too. And so, uh, but obviously there's a lot of perspectives on that, uh, for sure, a lot of nuance. Um, but as you, uh, and we review what, what the plan says there, and then you go on, well, what is actually recommended? What's the complaint saying that should be done about it? And so, in reviewing the 2035 comprehensive plan, uh, it does, pretty important statement, rural preservation is one of the plan's top priorities. Um, it's, uh, chapter seven, page nine, um, it lays out rural preservation objectives and, uh, and strategy, some of those, some of which we've already done, some of which, uh, uh, regulates sea floods, uh, we've, we've done, we didn't, we did a lot of those, we did a brief law review, and we were hit with, you know, that's over, you know, twenty-five percent slope and then those kinds of things. Um, open space preservation and that kind of thing, we've implemented a lot of things that, that don't require developers to set aside open space. Cluster zoning, we performed our cluster zoning revisions, and that, that's there to, to satisfy that requirement. One of them we never had really addressed or really looked at is the, uh, one of the things that recommended, since this was a quote from it, assess the appropriateness of an agricultural or rural district for unincorporated sub county that will allow one unit a week and per five acres of land. And so that is one of the things that's said, so essentially done is to assess that, look at it. Um, and so that's what the Plank Commission's done over the last year, is to assess it, to look at it, um, as to basically, was it something that, that, that could be done or should be done? And, uh, they directed us to have to draw language accordingly, and to indicate on the map how it would be done. So that's what we're doing here, obviously to show that. Um, another recommendation here, this is viable agriculture objectives and strategies, this is another, uh, one of the recommendations. Um, it's seven nine four down there to five, and recommends updating the Southern County zoning resolution to include an agricultural or rural zoning district for the primary purpose of agricultural uses and not just residential subdivisions. And so we've done that to some extent already with the agricultural reserve zoning district. Um, this RP's in the district that I'll be talking about here a little bit, uh, continues that. Um, so there, there's a, so all this is visual, uh, there's a map, so there's other things that, that show what should be done and where. And so the, the 2035 comprehensive plan provides a general framework map, which includes a number of community character descriptions. And what that is, is this is not necessarily something that says, which might bring in a subdivision today, you can approve it or deny it based on what the complaint says. Uh, what it says is, is a, is a, is, uh, that's the last sentence right here, the general framework map with the county character area descriptions should be a guide in future redevelopment decisions for the Southern County Regional Planning Commission and the Southern County Board of Commissions. And so that's essentially what I'm getting at, sums up what was proposed, as we've taken what's in the comprehensive plan, and we showed you what that's going to look like if you do the zoning, uh, like this, this will, this has a strategy. So here is that general framework map, again, this was adopted back in 2010. Uh, most of the unincorporated county consists of two character areas. Uh, the first is the suburban place type, uh, which is this kind of yellowish, oh, yellowish area, that's what I'm showing here. Around the cities, um, you see this yellow area here, that's the suburban place, that's the urban roof boundaries. Uh, those are the areas to which the, uh, the, the cities can and expect some more in the future. Um, and so that's, that's, uh, that's the suburban place type. And the rest of the county is outside of the, this is called the rural place type, so that's this green area here. Um, there's other little, little swatches here and there, but most of it is this, this green area, uh, which is area outside of the urban roof boundaries. So again, there's those urban roof boundaries, let's turn that layer on, on the assessor site, uh, to show where those are, that would correspond to the suburban place type, and would correspond to the, the RR's, the whole of it basically is the same. So, uh, all right, so we know there's suburban, we know there's rural, um, from the comprehensive plan, so what does, what, what does it say? Um, what does it say that the zoning pattern should be, um, in the 2035 plan? Um, what it says is in that suburban character area, um, it encourages more of them in that area, really, one unit per one acre, is what, is what is encouraged by the comprehensive plan there. Um, predominantly the density residential, um, one building per acre. That doesn't mean necessarily that it has to be one, uh, uh, acre lots, um, there's closer provisions, there's ways for these lots sizes, but overall, one unit per acre, forty thousand square foot lots is what's recommended there. Um, then there's the rural place type, which again is that area outside of the urban roof boundaries. And what it calls for in the comprehensive plan is very low density, um, one building per acre per five acres, is what it says here, it's more hard to read up there, but very low density. With an emphasis on maintaining rural atmosphere and surroundings. So there's, there's, there's obviously, there's an inconsistency that right, so the zoning code says one thing, uh, that's the third of the laws. The comprehensive plan, which the Plank Commission adopted, says something totally different, so how do you square that circle? And that's, that's something that the staff is struggling with, this Plank Commission's struggle with, the last Plank Commission's struggle with, and then discussed it. Um, what the complaint says is, is use these, this is, this is a framework, so again, the zoning code is essentially what it was saying at that time, it does say that. So what does the statute say, what does the local state law says? Uh, what it says is if the legislative body has adopted a general regional plan, which the 2035 plan is, by resolution, is there a county, uh, then you have, what you have to do is you have to make sure that your land use decisions comply with that plan. And so what that means is that the complaint has the force of law in that context. Uh, so that makes the Plank Commission, when it does this thing, and the board's open views, when it does this thing, the Plank Commission should strive to make sure that every decision they're making complies with that general plan. That hasn't been done a lot in the past, just to be frank, um, in the last four or five years, as I mentioned, we've been trying to, um, six years, we've been trying to, to implement those, those recommendations in the complaint, and this thing's come along. Um, but prior to that, there really wasn't a bunch. Uh, and so, uh, you know, again, this, what this is saying is the, the legislature's told us that, that they need to try to comply with the complaint with your zoning decisions. One thing, again, under the study session is, uh, uh, you know, when we have, uh, zoning and the complaint disagreed, can you use the complaint to deny somebody subdivision flat? Uh, right, we had that discussion linked to the Plank Commission, um, it's a recommendation for future land use decisions. So if the zoning is forty thousand square feet, the land use decision's already been made for you, you have to approve the flat. Uh, what this is saying is, uh, it's recommended that, that you, uh, look at the zoning districts to match that complaint. So as I mentioned, inconsistencies between the county's adopted complaint and our zoning resolution, as I always said, the residential zoning, uh, has been ever this issue for some years, causes confusion among the Plank Commission, we had multiple study sections where we, we hit on that, about, about the, the, well, how can we do this if the complaint says that, that kind of thing? Uh, the staff is confused, the other team confused, they come from out of town, particularly they look at things, they say, well, your complaint says this, but your zoning says that, we all, we do, you know? And so what this, what these changes will do, at the end of the day, um, uh, the staff doesn't do well, it's not fair to anybody, uh, to, to be asked to implement things that don't make sense, where you have disagreements and that kind of thing. And so one or another, one of them needs to change, whether it's the complaint changes or the zoning code, we have the, the zoning code changes. Um, but alignment of all our plans, subdivision regulations, zoning code with the comprehensive plan, that's the idea, that's what you want to strive for. Uh, that's what some places, Williamson County, a number of other municipal governments, that, that, all their policies match. And so that way you can have consistent subdivision rules across the board, everybody knows what to expect. Uh, it's not arbitrary. And so what these changes will do would be to take the zoning code and to bring it into alignment with the comprehensive plan, or at least get it in a closer alignment. Uh, there's more, more work to be done, I think, but, but it would bring this aspect of it into alignment. So as far as the zoning code, what actually is changed? So I'm going to move one at a time, three at each, all these changes, Mr. Chairman, just to talk about, uh, what was specifically, um, texted on, is being changed here. So first thing is not fixed, it's the map, uh, the map is, uh, again, from the story, signal, since the preservation is here. Again, most of the county is currently zone the rural residential, which includes us forty thousand square foot lots. Uh, the 2035 plan recommends, um, is that it may be changed in order to require lower densities in the function of the county that's classified as rural, of the function of the county classified as suburban should remain available for more intensive development, uh, of a rural one unit per acre. Okay, so what's proposed to change is to, again, we saw on the complaint, that general framework map applies to the zoning code. Uh, what it will do is it will bring the county's residential zoning regime and compliance with the 2035 plan's recommendations. Uh, we'll make a note, anybody with any existing entitlements, if you have a plot that's proved, you know, somebody's applied that's proved, if you bought a lot, that implied that that was done properly through the Plank Commission, um, none of that is ever been, no act of any of these. Any lots of record, any other changes, or any, any other, any other entitlements anybody has will not be changed by this. That's the Tennessee Best Property Rights Act, 2014, guarantees that. Um, what the, what, what, what this action will do, this resolution will do, will be create a new zoning district, called the RP district, which is ingrained here. It's, um, which will have a minimum lot size of five acres, um, that allows a reduction of a lot size to one hundred thousand square feet or two point three acres, um, if you have active infrastructure available. So it's not a hard and fast five acres, um, if you're in, in general, if you're in the part of the county that surrounds that UGV, there's effectively like a stair step, in the cities you can do very intense development. And urban growth boundaries, you can do less intense development, but still relatively intense around that UGV, where, where there are more services, um, you'd be able to do basically two acre lots, and then at the ridge, you transition to a five acre, that one lot size really effectively, because there's just not many services there, up there, you don't have water at all, you see that parts of the county where service is not allowed. Those have been entitled to five acre blocks, they should stay long, you can't, can't go any longer than that. So that's their step approach, it, it complies with TCA 658 107, which is, uh, from chapter eleven oh one, uh, which the Plank Commission has looked at as something, plant growth areas, rural areas, UGVs, differentiation of like those three things. And I think, uh, what it, what it, the state law requires is that we have to be consistent with that, that, that plan that's approved by the state or some county. So it, it would have to do a purpose of, of complying with that as well. Um, it would keep the rural residential zoning, uh, in place, so again, if you're in the urban growth boundaries, and around this whole, whole number of, of the Galton, then you should be able to handle this by this white house, um, then you're being unchanged, there's nothing that'll change of this, um, but outside of that, there will be some changes, you know, maybe it would be more context sensitive where development would occur, where infrastructure actually exists. So, uh, now to the, to the actual language of the code, um, some of this is pretty drought and crack stuff, but you have to do all the right things as far as getting it, it's, I'm concerned, into the code. And so we tried to come through the code, it's missing good, and, uh, and find where all the changes need to be made. Um, first is get to establish it, and so chapter three establishes each one of our zoning districts, this would add the RP zoning here, and, uh, and, and would, uh, would add it as one of the zoning districts. Next, chapter four, section four oh two, um, we, we describe each one of the zoning districts, talk about what they're intended for. Uh, the RP zoning district is here, I apologize for reading the slides, but sometimes I feel like it isn't worth it. Well, this one is designed for, this district is designed to provide and preserve areas for the growing crops, animal husbandry, dairy, forestry, and other development of rural agricultural uses, which generally carry across rural, the urban, the rural areas. In that sentence, it's probably the key, um, the district, uh, may also include very low density residential development, with an emphasis on maintaining rural atmosphere and surroundings. Um, and so that's, you know, the two, they, the, the lot size reduction, that fits in that, with the, the context of the rural, uh, uh, cross section, uh, the rural state cross section that we have, uh, with the Plank Commission's willing to approve subdivisions of the roads and that kind of thing, provided that's at a rural context, and that road is on there, and that's right away, that kind of thing, no sidewalks. That's it, that's all. Then, at chapter four, section four oh four, um, the, the, uh, both regulations are established, again, you see five acres, here's another lot size, um, built, locked with, and that kind of thing, those folks are made the same, uh, minimum building setbacks, there's a little bit more front yard setback, I don't know if you hear for this, this district, uh, but that's it, that's all, other than that, it's, it's the same as the RR's zone, with the exception of the lot size requirement. Again, that variable lot standards here, you would be able to increase to two point three acres, hundred thousand square feet, um, if you, uh, have access to, uh, uh, public water and access to, uh, line, that's able to, that's all fire, that is something that's been noted as a priority of the Plank Commission, asking one particularly, and has been for a while. And provided that's on the road, at least eighteen feet with, and something that, if developed, though, it is, is it able or willing to make any improvements? You know, they can come in on fourteen foot wide road, and they do it, but they just need to improve the road, and so you have eighteen foot standard, and what you do it, and upgrading water lines that you totally require, and that kind of thing. Next, uh, the thing I have to do is the maintenance activity table, um, so we just add the RP zoning, and then have all the different uses, you know, as everything from food and beverage services, if you're not allowed, and that's on the districts, uh, you know, senior member residential, which others did, um, to, uh, you know, things crazy stuff like developed entertainment, um, not allowed, um, but, uh, uh, auto mechanic shafts would be allowed, providing you have the more zoning bills. But just, just the same as what's in the RR's zone, there are really, really differences there. And then it just carries on for another question. Uh, next, Mr. Chairman, there's a good bit of discussion, we had a study session where the, the Plank Commission had some, uh, folks that had the developer business speak to all of them, surveyors and that kind of thing, a few months ago, and one of the things that we really noted was, you know, what do you do with all the lots that are left behind? If you increase the minimum lot size, you have a lot of non-conforming and grandfathered lots. Um, those lots need to adjust property lines, they need to, you know, add easelments or change their sandy soil areas, and that's the, if you take a really hard stance on, on grant, like, you know, non-conformities, those people wouldn't be able to change anything on those lots unless they can get to five acres. And that's not reasonable, it's not feasible, it's not possible, so we, we, what we did was create some language here that says that if you've got the existing lot, you live in a subdivision, you've got acre lots, it's now five acre minimum lot size, you still can resubdivide those lots, you can add acres to it, you can, you can take acres away from it, as long as you don't go below that forty thousand square foot minimum. Um, then that'll allow folks to continue to be able to, you know, if they, they walk in right there and listen, if your neighbor builds a shed over your property line and you guys have to get it fixed, you can resubdivide the lot in order to get back there. And so hopefully that would catch a lot of issues, and when it comes to the ownership of existing lots. And then just some other miscellaneous changes, Mr. Chairman, we're, uh, we just need to reference zoning districts for, um, uh, you know, exterior coverage, utility, other things like that. Cell towers is another one where we, uh, we, there's a miscellaneous change that we've read, and then. And then, Mr. Chairman, uh, so we do have nine zoning map amendment standards that we need to look at, um, this for our complaint, and as you guys know, I've already done this every month, that we have a resigning before the Plank Commission, and we look at for every amendment that we have. There are nine map amendment standards, I'm going to read through those, all these other ones. Um, the first one is whether, and to the extent to which the proposed amendment is consistent with the Southern County comprehensive plan and any other applicable county adopted plans. Uh, yes, the statute interpretation on that is that this amendment is consistent with the county's comprehensive plan. Number two, whether and the, the extent to which there are changed conditions that require amendment. The changed conditions really are, you know, the, the, the county's seeking to bring the zoning regulations that are culturally conforming with the comprehensive plan. Three, uh, whether and the extent to which the proposed amendment addresses administrative meaning, um, the amendment would comply with the safety goals of the county's comprehensive plan, which again was adopted by the Plank Commission following all the public interaction that they did, public input back then. Four, uh, whether and the extent to which the proposed amendment is compatible with the existing and proposed uses surrounding the subject plan as the appropriate zoning district for the land. Um, this zoning amendment would be compatible as per the adopted comprehensive plan, as I mentioned, the, the place type, certain, uh, the character areas that are available in the plan. Uh, so they, they, they propose a more logical pattern only based on what the complaint recommends. Uh, five, whether and the extent to which the proposed amendment would result in a logical, in order to develop pattern, or deviate from a logical, in order to develop patterns. And so, uh, the statute interpretation on that is that it would pose a more logical, in order to develop a pattern based on available services. Um, and again, referencing that comprehensive plan is, is being the, the basis for the zoning code change. Or what are the, the, the basis for the zoning map. Whether, and I would say whether and the extent to which the proposed amendment would encourage development prior to the availability of necessary services and infrastructure, um, this, this amendment will probably have the opposite effect to that, it becomes more logical, in order to develop a pattern based on available services and infrastructure. And so what we're saying is, um, whether these, these, the, the, the text of the amendment says that where there is more infrastructure amendments is that where there is more infrastructure, you can do more development, where there's less infrastructure, essentially you can do less, less development. Seven, uh, whether and the extent to which the proposed amendment would result in the creation of an isolated zoning district unrelated to adjacent and surrounding zoning districts. Um, no such isolated zoning district will be created, um, the proposed district boundaries are, are in agreement with the county's comprehensive plan. Eight, whether and the extent to which the proposed amendment would result in significantly adverse impacts on the property values of surrounding lands. We have not received any real estate appraisals or any sort of testimony on that topic related to adverse impacts to property values. Um, the, uh, Tennessee Board of Local Appeals, section, the big Anderson county, resists the, have to have a, a, if you want to take real estate values into account. Uh, but that said, uh, this is one of those things that zoning is, is at the end of the day, is, uh, uh, an action that has impact on property values, all zones are best. Anytime you say, uh, something is industrial zoning or not industrial zoning, or whatever it might be. And so, uh, that is part of caution to, uh, to, to any zoning action. Uh, nine, whether and the extent to which the proposed amendment would result in significantly adverse impacts on the natural environment, including but not limited to water, air, noise, groundwater management, wildlife, vegetation, wetlands, and, and the natural function of the environment. Um, we don't foresee any naming impacts on the natural environment. Um, frankly, we'll probably start to restrict development in the more sensitive areas like the ridge, um, as recommended by the comprehensive plan. Uh, so probably resulted more preservation of the natural environment. Next, uh, zoning text amendment standards, this is, we have map amendment standards, we do have text amendment standards. Somebody says that the meaning of the text is a legislative act, per somebody who's the county commission, on recommendation of the planning commission, uh, the planning commission, county commission shall consider the following factors in their actions. So they're basically finding it's a fact. Um, number one, whether and the extent to which the proposed amendment is consistent with the Southern County Comprehensive Plan, which is planned in all applicable county adopted plans. Yes, we find that the, the text amendments are consistent with the county's comprehensive plan. Is it, uh, in conflict with any provision of this resolution, of this zoning resolution? Um, it is not inconsistent with any other provisions of the county's zoning resolution. Three, uh, whether and the extent to which there are changed conditions that require amendment, um, the amendment is bringing some regulations that may conform to the comprehensive, um, and as stated, that's, you know, part of state law and part of the requirements when you have a comprehensive plan, has to try to work toward that. So that's essential changes. Four, whether and the extent to which the proposed amendment addresses the administrative community need, um, again, as a separate review of the amendments, we don't recommend the county's residential zoning and their compliance with the stated goals of the county's comprehensive plan. Five, whether and the extent to which the proposed amendment is consistent with the purpose and intent of the zoning districts in this resolution, or would it bring compatibility among uses and ensure efficient development patterns within the county? And so, yes, we would say, uh, the proposed amendment is consistent with the purpose and intent of the zoning districts, um, and would it bring compatibility among uses and would ensure more efficient development patterns across the county, again, based on infrastructure, um, with the development. Six, uh, whether and the extent to which the proposed amendment would result in a logical and orderly development pattern, uh, yes, the developed development pattern would be more logical in terms of available services. Um, and seven, lastly, whether and the extent to which it would result in significantly adverse impacts on the natural environment, including but not limited to water, air, noise, groundwater management, wildlife, vegetation, wetlands, and the natural function of the environment. And so, as I said earlier, the proposed text amendment will not result in such negative impacts to the natural environment, would certainly restrict development in more sensitive areas, such as the grid, as were recommended by the comprehensive plan. So, Mr. Chairman, um, there's example motions there on the screen. Uh, the first, uh, is to approve the planning commission resolution between twenty-four oh one and forward a policy recommendation on the Southern County Commission. Uh, number two would be to deny the planning commission resolution between twenty-four oh one and forward a new recommendation on the Southern County Commission. And number three would be to defer this, uh, in order to take additional information, and that certainly is, is an option if the planning commission wishes to defer, um, their experience, and the number of referrals, we would just need to re-sign, um, just like[893.41]
Like I said, I do know that this isn't up for discussion. But I do ask that you cease all operations until each time you become compliant with the law, with TCA thirteen dash three dash one oh one. And remove ourselves from any liability that will unnecessarily cost our taxpayer the gash dollars. I don't feel that that's necessary to do at this time. Thank you very much for your time, Mr. Chairman, Mayor of the Plant Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
The Mr. Chairman, the next person to sign the speech is Terry Chamberlain.
Thank you for this opportunity. I'm not a farmer, not a builder. I'm just a longtime Southern County resident. Family's been here over fifty years. My wife's family's been over here fifty years. With their land in this county all that time. I watched my father, their father and mother, both in their nineties. My oldest brother was able to build next to them on a little plot of land. They helped take care of him for years to kill me, had a struggle. And if his daughter was able to build next to him, take care of him. I'm telling you all this because there's a lot of charts and all this stuff is amazing, you know, and y'all know it was a job, but there's a family aspect of this that's going to affect generations. And I know I'm not the only family out there that's going to be affected by this. I've got two sons, they want to build next to me, not going to be able to, this happens. So I'm looking at, y'all need to nurse them now, something y'all are going to face down on that. And so there's going to be things that this affects that go beyond whether the roads are pretty or whether there's, you know, buildings that are adequate or whatever. There's a personal aspect of this that goes beyond all these other things. And I think it's much more important, it's the legacy of these families that want to build next to each other, take care of them, and again, I think you've got to look at that. Because all this other stuff is not really that important when it comes down to that. When you're looking at having to put your father or your mother in a nursing home, or whether you're in a helpless side to take care of. I've witnessed that. I've lived on my in-laws' farm now, and I was able to watch my wife take care of her mother and her daughter. And that was a tough time, but it was also a time that they don't regret. So, you know, all this other stuff is great, but there is another aspect that I think you need to look at, and approve something like this. Thank you.
I'm finished having scheduled a conflict, so Mr. Chairman, if I ask you, is the commission Perry John, you can say?
Do you see your name and address?
My name is Mary Jean. I live at eleven hundred Block Four Road in Gallatin, Tennessee. And the reason I'm here tonight, and I appreciate you letting me on early, because I have another meeting to go to. I have lived through the help of Gallatin's open development. We watched the properties being annexed over and over and over again, and multiple homes being built. It's created a traffic nightmare, congestion, and it's taken away the beautiful character that we have in the Gallatin area. And that's not the county's fault, but we've asked the city of Gallatin particularly to lower the population densities from the building of subdivisions. And actually, it's falling pretty much on debt here. We're getting lots of condominiums and lots of townhouses and apartments. And the reason I think, and I understand what a lot of people say, they have farms and they, you know, won't let next to each other, et cetera, et cetera. And I understand that, but in the larger scheme of things, when you have a large piece of property, or you want to build your home, you have a farm where you want to put subdivision in, you have to think about all the other people around you. And when you are not willing to do that, as for example, a block four road, you end up with high density. So I believe that I've listened to your resolution and the fact of what you would like to do, and I agree with it. I feel like it's not, it's up to us to protect all the citizens in Southern County. It's not just to protect a certain group. And so I would particularly like the idea that you would approve this to the commission to be woven on the way of it. I understand what the mayor said, and we will not commit with the law. I'm not a lawyer, but I do think that giving the opportunity for developers, because developers somewhat have a lot to say in this community and our county and in our cities, they seem to have the upper hand. So I have concern about the large Wilford, the Black Rock, the O'Hortons, Warren Buttes, all of those coming into this area, the whole county into a large, large area of homes. And that's what I'd like to say, and I appreciate y'all.
Mr. Chairman, the next person to sign the speech is Karen Lookout.
Karen Lookout, one thousand six, Grand Lake Road, Gallatin. Let me practice my following comments first by saying I generally support the five acre minimum in rural preservation and order of slow development. However, I feel it is important that discussions continue to address future development plans, including residential corridors around city centers and preservation of the county's open spaces and ecological amenities. The following is from a study done by Elsevier. Their research is scholarship for the world's leading database of peer-reviewed, full-text scientific, technical, and health literature. This study, "Natural Amenities and Low Density Residential Development: Magnitude, Spatial Scale, Influence," is March twenty twenty one. Expansive low-density residential development beyond the urban fringe is a trend in many parts of the world, including northern and southerner of the United States. Due to its large footprint, this type of development poses considerable threats to biodiversity through habit alteration, disturbance to ecological biotic processes, and direct disturbance by humans. While low-density five acre minimum land size on its face seems a more attractive option to high-density development, in reality, it is more detrimental to ecologically valuable amenities. Our priority should be protecting Southern's beautiful geography, wildlife, water features, forested areas, and expansive open views. Promoting development here, urban and suburban centers, is more cost-effective given the existing infrastructure. Additionally, multi-story, multi-unit building is found to be more attractive to young, higher-earned buyers or renters. Urban centers offer dining and shopping opportunities that benefits local businesses, residents of the community as a whole, and downtown areas over experience revitalization. We should be promoting Southern County as a recipe to Davidson County and not North Nashville. We should be attempting to attract residents and tourists to life who desire a quiet lifestyle of that which we currently enjoy. I can tell you from personal experience, having moved from the metro New Jersey, New York area of Port St. Lucie, Florida, in nineteen seventy eight, my parents, rampant growth destroys ecologically sensitive areas. In nineteen seventy eight, there was one traffic light, one grocery store, and one gas station and just a little over twenty thousand residents. Forty-six years later, today, the current population of Port St. Lucie is five hundred and sixty-five thousand. This town, with no city center or defined business district, continued its history of haphazard planning and zoning, focused on residential growth. Only later in two thousand seven did the city recognize the need to attract businesses and attempt to create a city center, resulting in a bad deal made with a Chinese developer who still owes the city over sixty million dollars in tip. The city center went into foreclosure, retail spaces briefly off and out of business, surrounding properties proposed for high-rise condos that are developed to this day. But the worst was the oversights, which is really laughable and sad. Without a vision of what the future held as a result of their poor planning was the lack of hurricane evacuation rates. Built over the many rivers and wetlands allowing hundreds of thousands of residents to safely get out of town. The creation of two ten-mile multi-game thoroughfares in two thousand fifteen and two thousand sixteen costing billions of dollars, transversing from east to west, were part of the taking of thousands of homes reminiscent of man in a destructive sense of violence. I thought I had five minutes. I think I say more than a bit more. A final thought to leave you with, from my late teens to my late twenties, I circle on a pristine coral reef of each approximately two miles to Port St. Lucie, teeming with tropical fish, raised sharks, and magnificent corals. Over a fifteen-year period, that same right reef would be dead, brown, collapsing, followed by the toxic orange bacteria brought on by a storm runoff, laden with wastewater and fertilizer. For several years now, warnings to stay on the ocean have gone out up and down the southeastern coast of Florida due to wastewater and raw sewage, dumping some local waterways to the Atlantic. Imagine sitting on a beautiful beach, trying to tell me to stay on the groundwater. Please take into consideration what I've shared and applied to Southern County, safe and wise to look.
Mr. Chairman, I've got Commissioner Tim Jones to sign up here.
Thank you, commissioners. Tim Jones, one twelve Georgetown, God bless him now. Last time I came to speak to this commission, planning commission, we were at different places in the seats, but three of you are still going to be here. I was very encouraged because it was about a development around the edge of Henderson Bill that bordered county and city properties, and the factor of citizens, and comments made from some of the planning commissioners that night, they're not here now, but some of you felt the same way that you told me, was that the development was denied because they couldn't see anything less than five acres looking right in that area. Another plan that was being talked about around Stop Thirty Road, had a packed house of citizens also that were outraged because development was coming to their little rural area, where it was already starting to get dense, and they didn't want to see that happening over there. The sentiment is the same with all of my constituents that I've talked to, that they're tired of all the growth on the urban boundaries happening near their forever homes they've built with large tracts of land. I like this plan with five acres. I like it especially because the citizens still have the option to do what previous commissions have done, which is allow zoning variances for those family homes that have the, you know, eight acres and they want to split it in half. Well, it's two fours, that's not going to work out, but with a zoning variance, that can be allowed. The previous commission has done things like that in the past, and the future commission's going to do that, but we're talking about a standard, a standard going forward for mass developments. And so I think this will protect the students and the citizens of the no doubt those rural areas.
Mr. Chairman, the next person to sign the speech is Joey Robbins.
Excuse me, from my voice, but this guy's not active right now. So, my name is Joey Robbins. I live at three sixty thirty Grove, North Tennessee. I'm a builder, small-town developer. I've been in the construction business since the early eighties. I'm sixty-six years old. I grew up in St. Lucie, in this country that I built, this printer line, doing construction. I employ hundreds of men. I grow four or five hundred houses a year, since I was already saved, because I grew up in the air, it's built, it's nothing but farmland. In the lake, I know what it looked like, but it didn't have anything on it. I know what Gallatin looked like, it's farms. I worked mostly probably living in that grid, but I've grown up your house. I'm here today because I'm in a perfect scenario to describe why I would be so against this. I live in Irving, on Freeville Road. I've got a hundred and forty acres. I bought and sell parcels in the past five years. I have three of my children, my four kids, I got three of my children that have parcels of land to live there. We got a ninety-two acre farm that we have occupied right now. I've got a son and a daughter-in-law that just graduated nursing school, they're dentists, nurses. And currently, I'm trying to make five lots in the front yards of the land that I've owned for twenty-five years, the land that I purchased, that I purchased. I'm a women's and bank boardland. I'm going to leverage my life to get around that for my kids and my family. And so if you was to stop me from doing that, I've got three kids that live on the farm. I've got one, I'm going to say, I'm sorry, son, but she didn't make the board commission. What I have a struggle with is, I have bought seven farms. I am the person who's speaking of this, develop roadfront lots. What I've done up there in that community, and I'm in that community that you're talking about, I bought parcels that were seventy acres, I sold four or five acre lots in the front, marched three, four, five hundred tracts in the back, got towards the back end up, sold a ten acre track, sold a twenty acre track. I've got farms that I tracked off into five acre tracks. I've got a farm on four, I've tracked off and sold about five acre lots in the front, five acre track behind it, eight acre track behind it. These aren't trashy homes. These are nice five hundred, eight hundred, fifty thousand, two million dollar properties. Now, I've been doing that, but I've been developing up there in my area. It's not garbage, it's not increased population, it's not like I've done something that's put so much highway traffic. What I've been doing is actually very nice, very lovely, and if you're still looking at what I've done, I've done a very good job up the back. I've got currently a piece of property that I've got contracted, and I don't make it off five acre tracks, because that's the way that land lays. Now, some of the land that we talk about, where you don't have infrastructure, if you don't have infrastructure, you don't have water. When you try to go up to the board and get that zone to be a certain thing, happen to it, it's not going to get zoned. If you don't have infrastructure, you don't have soil, you don't have water, you don't have roads wide enough, you're not going to get a one acre track. Anyway, so then the next scenario is, and I have to talk to, I got friends who are multi-farmers. Now, let's talk about financial obligation, that we're talking about voting on something, about commission vote on land that you didn't buy. We're talking about preserving the farm land that you don't own, that you didn't spend your life, that you didn't inherit, that you didn't do anything apart, but you're going to actually vote to tell these farmers that you're going to have to sell five acres that time. So if you haven't done your math, and I have to say, let's take a typical seventy-five acre farm, and just use this as an example. Yes, sir? Yes. So if you guys say about a farm on a two thousand foot road from me, and I can make you ten lots, and I can sell it for one million to one point two million dollars, and you'll still own sixty-five acres that you can continue to crop. You might use that mill to pay off your farm, so you can leave it to your children, you don't have a debt. You might use it for equipment. But if I tell you that you can own seven five acre tracks, I can only get you thirty thousand dollars more for the five acre track, because I can eat you for the one acre. So why would a farmer loan you about fifty acres for three hundred four thousand dollars when he sets only sixty-five acres? Ten years from now, that sixty-five acres is going to go up in value two and three and four times. So how are you going to take a farmer, as far back as I am, he's sixty-five, seventy-eight years old, you tell him, I can't sell this farm, Mr. Robbins, that you put some more acre lots? The next thing I understand is still about that, one acre track, when I buy like one acre track from him, he sets aside some, where he can take and sell some other that great section, one acre spot, one hundred foot spot, one hundred foot spot, he can actually sell it. I like a farm for ten farms, and I like a farm for ten, you know, coming back. You actually are saving the farmer, you're actually saving the farm land, and you're giving him a chance to hold onto his land longer, which saves and preserves what they own in the first place. I think we need to talk to him.
The next person to sign the speech is Virgil Buckham. Is it Buckham correctly?
My name is, you know, I was working back on my chairman of the county. It's two fifteen, Front Valley Road, which is probably in that area we talked about. I'm so close to the city limit at the White House, that probably will be annexed shortly. So my concern originally was, I've got a small parcel of land, but my retirement plan was, if I could cut three one acre parcels off right where the creek runs between me and a hundred and twenty acre farm on the other side of it, the city just bought, that's going to allow me to have probably three and three hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards retirement. But the main thing that I wanted to talk about is, I'm also a real estate agent, and what this is going to do with you the five acre thing, is two of my agents are also independent contractors, and they basically make their living by doing that very thing, by going and finding someone who can sell them a one acre parcel. Most of my hundred dollars have been stolen by the people that spoke before me. But if you make it so that they have to buy five acres in order to build a home, now no longer can they build a four hundred thousand dollar home or a five hundred thousand dollar home, which is getting harder and harder for the average Tennessean to afford, now you're going to kick it up to where it's going to be a million plus, because the land is going to cost more money to buy. So I think that the reason I'm against it, you know, the people talking about urban sprawl in like Gallatin and those kind of places, those are already gone. And the whole idea of trying to cram everybody into those urban areas is what's causing that sprawl. But as far as limiting what you could do out in the county, I mean, I know so many people that would love to have a one acre parcel. That's where they want to raise their family, they want to have a few chickens, they want to do some things like that you can't do in a subdivision. And if this is passed to where it's got to be a five acre parcel, with everything else that's going on in the real estate industry, with prices of real estate going up so high, interest rates doubling, I mean, the first time I bought a home, my interest rate was eleven percent, which is during the Carter administration. Fortunately, but I paid forty-nine thousand dollars for that house, I didn't pay a half million dollars at seven or eight percent interest. So what we're doing is we're pricing people out of the market, and we're essentially pricing people out of the market that want to have just a little piece of land so they can do, you know, have a little bit of separation from their neighbors. Instead, we're cramming them into these things where they're allowing development to put five or six homes on an acre. Now, how, I mean, I understand that, I mean, White House alone has issued five thousand building permits over the last year, five thousand. And that used to be another little town when I first moved there, it had a stoplight. But you can't stop it. People want to come here, they want to live here, they want to live here for a reason. Tennessee is one of the most desirable states in the country. But if you do this as far as restricting it to five acres, I think the gentleman right performing pretty much laid out the scenario quite well. The fact that you could get, a farmer can get, say, a hundred to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a one acre parcel, but he can only get maybe another thirty to fifty for five acres. And you want to talk about the impact it's going to have on real estate values? There it is right there. So if he sells them in one acre parcels, they're a hundred thousand pieces, that's five hundred thousand dollars for five. If you sell a five acre parcel for half that or even less, it hurts the farmer, it hurts urban development, just makes it a bad idea. Thank you.
The next person to sign the speech is Jeff Cornell.
Hello, Jeff Cornell, eight oh six, Grand Drive, Louisville, Tennessee. I am fifty-one years old. I was born, raised, and lived in Southern County. I am on the planning and zoning board for the city of Charlottesville. And I had a nice little speech together, but honestly, the mayor came up and said what he said, and I got to say, if I was on the planning and zoning board, which I am, and our city manager came up and said those words, my vote would be to defer the agenda item, and so I won't waste any more of the time, because that's where I believe this is going to go. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, the next person to sign the speech is Kevin Baker.
Deja vu all over again, Mr. Chairman. Oh, Kevin Baker, four two four, eighty-eight, wait, I just am astonished when I get up here and I talk, and the room is full of special interests. I wonder where all these special interest groups are when we're cashing out the nuts and bolts and keeping this county afloat. You know, we talked about developers and God bless them, they built this country. But equally, all the people here that live in this county that have been paying the bills, the property taxes going up and up and up as we develop more, because we bring people in here that don't pay for their own utilities, the schools, things like that. So now you're settling all of these people that didn't make a hundred and whatever thousand dollars per acre with those added taxes. You're pricing those people out of the market, out of their counties that they grew up. You know, when I look at this map, I could easily superimpose on top of this a pat or cat scan of a cancer patient. You look at those, you look at those colored blocks, that's the cancer growing out into the county. Look around us now, in ten years, not ten, twelve years almost, the amount of traffic that's built up, the amount of, you know, the burden on our infrastructure, and it's not paying for itself until you do something. But I also was astonished tonight to find out that we shouldn't even be meeting, you should just call for a German if we're operating outside, you know, the TCA code for running this thing. But we'll be addressing that tomorrow on my keyboard, so thank you very much, Chairman, and God bless you all.
Mr. Chairman, the next person to sign the speech is John McLeod.
John McLeod, one ninety-five, Old Drive. I'm not as ill as some of these people, some of them are getting a little bit of office. I had a lot more than three minutes to say, but I'm going to try to. My family came here with land rent in the war, eighteen twelve. That wasn't ten years ago, you know? It was a long time. And, you know, we love this community, the way that we have done business in this county and built this county in multiple generations is the reason people are moving here. So why do you want to change your county backwards, if what we've been doing is the reason people are still coming? A lot of the people that are standing up here tonight, such as yourself, are not from here. They moved here. You moved here for a reason. So a couple of things I do want to say, the mayor's correct, Tennessee code is black and white. I think you should call from a German as soon as you remain aware that it's not a conformer board. There are two different names, there is an appointed and a designated member on this board. Designated is someone who actually owns another county or city position, and they were designated a spot on the board. And appointed are the people that the mayor appoints to be on, the commission votes whether or not to appoint them to the board. It clearly states that the majority cannot be made up of the designated. It goes further to say, Mr. Klein, listen, I've been up here with you, in twenty nineteen, we were both up here fighting urban sprawl. I don't believe there should be major subdivisions in the county. I'm a real estate agent, but I don't believe there should be three or more. I think it should be a minor, one minor a year, that still gives people what they want. One minor a year, that still gives people what they want. But you're talking about not even on that. But what I'm getting at is the difference in the designated and the appointed, the designated positions can't hold your chair. They can't be the chairman. You can't be the chairman according to the Tennessee Code. It says only an appointed person, that's one of the people that are actually voted on by the county commission, can actually be a chairman of this board. So you're nonconformant. It's black and white. I don't even feel like we should, anyone should be addressing me right now because you're not qualified board to do what you're doing tonight. And that's what I have to say. Thanks.
The vice person to side of the speaker is John McLeod. I can't read the name. Start first, end first of the day, last name first of the day, phone number 6023.
My name is Donnie Sobal. I live on Chandler's Court in Hendersonville. I do want to commend this governing body for actually, and I don't know what's happening, but it takes 14 years to bring zoning and your comprehensive plan in alignment. That should show everybody, that one little factoid alone. I will let you know that I actually came here from the state of New Jersey after 9/11. And I actually chose Tennessee, not only because of the music and how Nashville was at the time, but also Hendersonville was, what, a past tense sleepy bedroom community was extremely attractive to me to be there. However, Hendersonville is just nothing but high density, poor planning, pet hazard, all these negatives that are actually were stated today, unsustainable, undesirable. When I purchased my home, I had the belief that I was going to live in a sleepy bedroom community. However, that has dramatically changed. Taxation increased, and as I tried to make sure that things maybe were in alignment as well, it's, it's very troubling that you think you're going to buy something at the time, and that's not what you're going to get. You buy the land, you buy the property with the understanding of what it is. Unfortunately, there's rezoning schemes that occur, and it all depends on if you have seven votes in the city, it'll get you anything. And that is citizens' damned. And that has been an ongoing conundrum for a very long time. Now, I'm empathetic to people and their desires to make profits and the things that they want to do. However, there has been a growing number of citizens who are saying, this is unsustainable. We're cutting into beautiful land. I've watched Nashville as well because I have property there. I have a lovely half acre lot on Al Dyer Avenue, and I've watched that entire section get nothing but chopped up, high density, high, building up on top of one another. And the only reason why they can do this is because I helped that area get stable water pressure that was denied for many years. But in doing so, it allowed developers to come in and do those things. There's drainage problems and everything which saddle the communities that live there. So there has to be some give. I really, I applaud this governing body because you're doing an awful lot of great things. And the greatest thing they're doing is listening to those who actually put you in the seats and wanted the change. I would like you to move forward with this, but I also get perplexed about the threats of lawsuits all the time. These, some of these things are documented. So how could that be sustained and allowed for so long? We have to ask ourselves those things too. So in the preservation, because word preservation, and some of the things are documented that are beautiful, please preserve this beautiful county. Thank you so very much.
The vice person to side of the speaker is Philip Nash.
Philip Nash, since I've been buying the board, wanted three points tonight, professional, political, and personal. You'll know when I change. Full transparency, professional. I sell building materials for local family, young company in Gallatin. I cover all of Tennessee. My income is solely based on residential construction. 90% of my business is from local mom and pop builders in this county. These builders are not the enemy. These guys are not the enemy. These mom and pop builders live here, have families here, have kids in preschools. They are the ones you want here. They are not the ones trying to put 700 houses on three acres. They are the ones building one house on one to two acres for middle class families like myself. They are the ones you're going to hurt. They employ dozens of vendors and trades, most of which reside in Sumner County. All of these trades and vendors spend their money on Sumner County. This will be a trickle effect. It will hurt so many park worker families and cripple our county's local economy. A majority of the current commission are in their campaign on small government and landowners' rights, referencing the stealing of land by eminent domain by this county for station campering land, which I agree is wrong. Now, the same commission is trying to dictate how private landowners sell their property. This is not a preservation goal area. This will eat up farms five acres at a time. This will be a complete government overreach. I'm a fifth generation Sumner County resident. My wife is a teacher in the Sumner County school system. We have two young children. My family has been saving the past couple of years to try to find a piece of land in the county to hopefully build our dream home. This resolution will price us and most young middle class families out of this area who will not be able to afford the cost of the five acres gained to build the house. Simple real estate knowledge will tell you, if you have that much cost in the way, you will have, you will have to build a house that makes sense and will appraise to offset the high cost of the land. This will price us out of the modest 2,500 square foot house we had planned. This will drive the land and house costs far greater than $1 million. We cannot afford that. I'm going to leave you with a question. Do you not want my family and I here? Why are you trying to price us out? If you kill local construction, which is what this resolution will do, by making it entirely too expensive to build, because it's still going to happen, unless you are major wealthy, you will kill my family's dream of living in our home county that we love so much. We can't live alone on a teacher's salary. It's hard enough to try to raise two young children in Joe Biden's economy. Please don't cripple our local economy and price us and so many other middle class and young families out. We are the future of Sumner County. I want to make a note that I was going to say something and I decided not to. But I am going to say that this commission was voted in by 14% of voters, and there's a lot more than 14% watching now. Do the right thing. Vote for everyone in the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nash, and thank you, everybody who spoke. We truly did want to know what you think. The last person I had side of the speaker, I don't know if anybody else wants to. We did, we passed a lot of proposals that everyone signed up. I think that we have one here. Commissioner Rogers.
General Rogers, 128, Old Fountain, Henderson, Jay Road, Portland, Commission of the Fifth District. We're at a crossroads. To make long story short, we're, we're at a point where we're going to have to decide, do we want to raise taxes to pay for school zones that are, or school campuses that are coming? And those are going to have to be to the standards of Liberty Creek. We'll probably be looking at one in the north Sumner area, I'm just guessing where they would be. We would probably be looking at one closer to the Portland area, and then we would probably be looking at another one in the Gallatin, Castade Springs, that area. So that's three. I've talked to several people, real estate agents and builders. Once they understood where we're coming from, they said they could still make their living off of this plan. We've got 0.92 acres within the urban growth boundaries of the city. You've got two and a half acres as you go further out, and you've got five acres if there's no infrastructure. We're not saying they can't put the infrastructure in and bring it up to the standards of what they need to have to build their homes. I think that's really where we need to get to. We're not, we're not tying anybody's hands, saying they can't do what they want to with their land. Just bring it up to codes and standards where we can protect the most valuable asset anyone's going to have, and that's the fire button there to put the fire. I mean, that's, that's really what we're trying to do, make sure you have a street that's wide enough that a fire engine and an ambulance can pass without swapping mirrors or having a back halfway down the road because they can't get there and God forbid somebody lose their life. That's really where we're at in this county. If we, you know, if we don't have water, you can't fight fires. If you don't have streets, you can't save lives. That's, that's the problem is where we're at. So I would ask that this goes to full panel commission.
Appreciate it. At this point, I would ask, the commission has any questions? Wants to respond to any of the statements? Okay, I would like to respond to some of the statements. We heard several of the people in the audience talk about five acres, but it totally disregarded the possibility of 2.3 acres. We also heard that the price of a one acre lot is not substantially less than a five acre lot, and I know that to be true. And so to say it's a financial hardship is true, but it's not like a five acre lot is five times as much as a one acre lot. Commissioner Rogers is absolutely right. We're a county that's $400 million in debt at the moment, and we're rapidly racing towards the debt that counties like Rutherford and Williamson, where there are a billion dollars in debt. The only way we can pay for at this point in time for the schools that have to be built, such as Liberty Creek, which is so far expected to cost $200 million for 3,600 children, which is about $55,500 per child, is basically through property taxes. We're going to have a class and budget on all the revenue sources we have in the county. But we have to look as a people, as a society, at what we're doing to our landmass here. We have flood control issues, we have sewer issues, we have traffic issues, we have expense issues, and at some point, something has to break. Now, if the county commission and the county commission in 2010 thought this was a good idea, is it a better idea today or is it a worse idea today? So I, I mean, I, you know, I absolutely want to have lively and vigorous debate over this issue. And I know that people are concerned about, you know, if there are material supplier for residential. That's, that's an important thing. You have to, you have to make a living. On the other hand, if we drive people out of the county because they can't afford their property taxes, and trust me, in going door to door and having over 650 conversations with people in District Six, there are many, many who are now retired on fixed incomes that are one property tax increase away from losing their houses. And they've lived here all their lives as well. They're now in their 70s and 80s. These are real people too. So we, we need to come together on this issue. I'm not sure about the appointed, designated issue. I was under the understanding that we were all appointed by the mayor and approved by the county commission. Mr. Sipper, can you address that at all, whether I'm a real chairman or not?
There's no role to be in chairman.
I realize that we're supposed to have more residents than commissioners on the board. On the other hand, if we all go home and don't have a planning commission at all, then nothing will happen here. And then we're talking about real big lawsuits because developers have rights too. And if they can't get their jobs approved through a planning commission, that's a problem.
Actually, he's to assign.
Part of it?
That's not true. He's to assign.
And the last thing I'd like to respond to is, is one of you said that can't dictate land sizes to, to people. Well, we already do it. It's been done since 1973. It's a 40,000 square foot lot. Should we go down to a half acre or a quarter acre, county line? It'll just magnify the problems. So we're trying to fix problems here, folks, not create them. We're not going to make everybody happy, we know that. When we took the jobs, and these are very difficult jobs, if you don't know, we spent lots of time on all the committees and commissions that we're on. It's hard, and we're trying to do the best for y'all that we can. And so we, there are laws, there are zoning codes, and they do exist for reasons. The zoning code that was implemented in 1973 was implemented for a much different county than exists today. And we have to address the problems of this county that are happening today, not happening in 1973. So I hope I have addressed every question that anybody had, and I'm happy to do it on the phone or in person after this, after this meeting. So at that point, we have some decisions to make as a commission. Do we have a motion for anything?
I'll make a motion for number one, to approve that county commission resolution and set of county commissions.
Okay, we have a motion for number one. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion on the motion and the second? All in favor, signify. Oh, let's, let's see the roll call.
Mr. Williams?
Okay, that's three to one. Motion passes. Thank you for everyone. We'll take a live minute break. We're going to do some, thank you.
Okay, we're going to read the meeting. Thank you, everybody, for your statements. We're going to go to item number two, which kind of follows up the deal's item number one. Mr. Suttis is going to read it.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, this is a resolution. This is kind of a cleanup of, 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 I guess, a resolution that basically, as we've gone through over the last year or so, and we did draft ballots here to the, to the planning commission with some zoning taxes and some good regulation states updates that just reflect things that we've seen out of the community, new regulatory departments that have gone down at the state level, that kind of thing, new trends, things that are affecting other counties that maybe we want to get ahead of that planning and then a nutshell there. And so these things, it's a, it's a, a random swarm of things here in this resolution that are just tax changes that kind of bring this up and go a little bit up to date in a lot of ways, next to a lot of cases of what we do things. And that I, I think will protect the county and then a number of ways from some uses that are a little bit more intense than, than probably the planning commission, county commission will be comfortable with, especially the county. So, all that being said, this, this item is, was related to, I don't know, a second, it's a, it's a, a bunch of, bunch items, as I said, it was not just in the county, a, a, a couple of county newspapers, the county alpha news, the national standard, or on February 8th, 2024, advanced this meeting. Text, that's, that's a four year old, this even was posted on his own website, available for public review as well, the county office, and it's been posted on the county sunshine board, on the county administration, this is that little notice that the national air should have already got the news, and it's on my same county, so they, they sign the papers and publish the national standard when we do, they got the news advertising. And it's a roundup of all the, the bunch of things that have been noted over the last year or so. I wonder a lot of this here in the study sessions, like elaborate, but I don't know, just from the bench, I think it kind of cool for everything. Wind turbine, several panel farms, data processing facilities, battery energy storage products, adding facilities for planning and development, retaining walls, block plan requirements, accessory rolling units, tweaks, tweaks to the regulation related to private cemeteries, and third, a special related to the recent department on name change. And so this is the first, that's, that's the first thing, actually. This is just sheets in the county design resolution where it's referred to, or not referred to, as building services, that's been changed by the county commission to planning and engineering. And so that reflects that across the document there. So that's the first change. Next, data processing facilities with server farms and battery storage facilities. You see, on the first page there, we added data processing facilities as an industrial use. Right now, this might get through with a, with a data server farm, something like that, with our current code, we'd really struggle without a classified. It's, their use didn't exist probably 20 years ago, at least not at the scale that we have today. Today, they're gigantic operations in some businesses. They don't really need us to know the water supply or anything like that, just electricity for the most part, and well water, they do have, significant water, I should say that, they have, so it easily goes somewhere in the county. And so it, I saw a big controversy, I mentioned this recently session in, in Washington County, Tennessee, employing a great area, part of Ohio, Southern Tennessee, where a big, big coal mining operation came in, and it was just extremely disruptive. They eventually settled the county and relocated. County didn't understand what they were approval, and that group didn't, in terms of that's been really a real decimal. And so what we would do is basically regulate those, those big industrial, industrial zones. So pretty much somebody's going to have to reason the property, means goes to county commission, everybody, public areas are able, that kind of stuff, or something like this. I mean, just make sure that they can't, if they would do something like that, not riot somewhere, because they do, they're well loaded, they have good lawyers, and sometimes they can, if you're not really clear in code, they can, they can pull one of them. So that's that. Wind turbine, several panel farms, that's something that we hear a lot about nowadays for renewable energy pushes. There's a lot of those going in around the state and around the country. When you put those in our classified, you didn't, you had several panel farms for a long time, but it wasn't something that I think people really follow. Probably with our current regulations, we attract a classified as some kind of essential service or some kind of utility or something. What we do is just take a step and clarify exactly what it is, really spell it out. Those, those specific things, there's no doubt about it, and how we help it work. Again, you see data, data processing facilities, we defined what those are. We talked about how they have, you know, big, big coal mining to, you know, big, big logging technology, that kind of stuff, big data processing systems and that kind of thing, with all their purchases and sources and everything. Again, we classify those as industrial uses here. We have them as an industrial activity, that needs to be industrial. Same thing with manufacturing, warehousing, recycling, or disposable battery and other energy storage products. Again, that sounds like something really arcane and kind of strange. TDA, that's something that we push. The TDA has been, been working with a lot of other contractors on, but there's other, I think Jefferson County, there's a company that is going to be in TDA contract right now, they're across, trying to get a big, that, that, that battery storage facility approved, it's got something like one to two million lithium ion batteries in it. And so what that does is TDA contract, those people to draw that power, or peak, peak times and that kind of thing, keep things from crashing like they did a couple of Christmas ago. And so that, that bigger thing, Jefferson County is something that has got those folks understandably concerned, it's a rural area, you have two million lithium ion batteries, and so there's concerns about fire and those kinds of things. And so I wouldn't have that classified with our current code, so we're going to really spell it out, okay, something like that, everything's up. And then right here forward, we're heading into the place, you see data processing facilities, they're, they're, they're all industrial activity. Again, battery stuff, that's, that's going to be in the heavy, so that's heavy industrial, so that's already taken care of. Though this is, you know, your server farms and that kind of stuff, they're allowable in, in the industrial zones, heavy industrial, light industrial, that will, that will basically just, it will be allowed there, which pretty much means that somebody's going to have to reason, because you saw a lot of free, light industrial property out there. So somebody's going to have to reason that. So that's, that's the effect of all this, is to make sure that the elected representatives of the county have a, have a voice and something like that that's going to come to the, to the county. And there's just, this, your credit is very important. This is something that they look at, they, they go through, they want to see, you know, if somebody does a logging operation or something like that goes into the county, they're going to look at them before they have a problem, and figure out what they can, they can do. And so with this, they'll go see any industrial, they say, okay, and then they won't talk about reasoning to any industrial, much like that process, to just clarify everything. And with those facilities for residential floods, we treat, every area we're putting in water, series, all these, roads, drainage, all those things are in control, that we require the builder to prove on the front end, and to demonstrate the capacity and that kind of thing. What this does is just, and this could lead to that list, and essentially the builder, when they come with a new residential flood, it's about the buy right developments. Somebody's to come in and do a subdivision plant that they have buy right, and they'll have to do this, they'll look for a new title, they need to analyze the school district that's impacted, confirm with the school district to see what kind of impact that is, is their capacity available, those kinds of things. That's, that's a part of the process for everything else that we've had, that, that, that's a farm, a school. Tailing walls, this is engineering backed stuff, but basically it just, it puts in the zoning code, a farmer's letter, the national living code, and elsewhere about when you need an engineer to help design a tanning wall, it requires a tanning wall, it's not non-decomposable, so you don't have timbers that are collapsing and those kinds of things for safety issues. And so it adds that to it. Next, we're kind of refining block plan requirements. Currently we require a block plan, we'll have five feet of even, and we're clarifying, that also includes a setback. And so if you have a little building within five feet of the setback line, we need a, we need a, a, and then we'll make sure that it's not a good line. Those are probably the ones that are something like that. Really don't say, they did the block plan to us, opposed to those hand drawn lines, thanks to my expert, I just look at 10 different provisions to a hand drawn cycle, and it drags the process way to go. Especially the rolling units, as the board, or as the county commission knows, this is something that we do allow in, in Southern County. The process is a little bit disjointed, and the sun has to go to the horizontal available in summer, for your staff, and what this does is just add a little bit more predictability to it. All any use go to horizontal available. And that, that's, so that you come into a buffer, especially the rolling unit, we do it for the horizontal available, and it should, should, it'd be an additional step in the process, so, but overall, it should sprinkle out the process from a structural perspective, and that just makes it a lot more difficult, and we don't have to minimize by whether you have BCA or not. That's, that's a recurring issue with our office. Private cemeteries, in the legislature and study session, the state legislature reveals some private acts that, that apply to Southern County for private cemeteries. And so this just cleans that up, is all it does, is write that language. Our zoning text amendment standards, you know, there's questions that have been asked, does it comply with the non-plan, another plan, this does, is it compliant with any other provisional code, to the best of my ability, I'm sure that it's not compliant. Are there changes, additions that are required, amendment? Yes, I talked about all of those. You've got transnational line, and here in state, that's, 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 most of them, they've experienced, you have the stack of other things. Does the address demonstrated to me convenient? Yes, I think, you know, with experience, it's usually sort of trying to really correct the address, I think that, that, that better, and none of other members would help us, the certain public patent have a little predictability. It's good, a lot of customers will always go, hey, I'll show you something, where it says I have to do that, and I don't, and we show them, and they don't, so it'll, it'll help us. Is it consistent with the purposes of the district, or would it be a great, kind of use to make sure efficiency? Yes, we do, we do all those things. Would it result in a logical, orderly development pattern? Yes, I think so. I think you've got really intense uses, they've got very classified, I assume, is, in a much more logical way, you know, things like battery storage. You know, things like battery storage and battery manufacturing should be head industrial, and there shouldn't be any question about that, and those are, those are the reasons. Would it result in negative impacts in the environment, and what you mentioned, that kind of thing? We don't, we don't anticipate any, and obviously, I mean, they would be approved, we have to be such, all those other regulations we have for form, for formal standard abilities, vibration, and that kind of thing. But we got a little meeting, though, from Mr. Jackson, was a question about, about some of that stuff, as far as, lightfall interference and that kind of thing. Our regulations do address that, and there's some changes to any things we should require, and we'd be able to do that in the county, so I think we did address this concern with current code. And so, Chairman, as you can see, the motion is on the screen there to approve the planning permission resolution 12402, to deny it or to defer, in order to claim additional question. I would like to try answering questions. Can I have anybody signed up for this one?
As much as we don't have anybody asking to speak to the issue, are there any questions regarding the planning commission? Okay, do we have a motion from anybody? Motion to approve by Kyrisha Williams, and second by Kyrisha Miller. We'll do a roll call. Passage unanimously. Thank you very much. I am three.
This is a rezoning of six oh three old highway thirty one E.
Sorry, I don't listen. This is a six oh three old highway thirty one E, a rezoning from RR to commercial, a commercial general.
Mr. Chairman, as you said, this is a rezoning of a couple of parcels, two very small parcels in Old Town, that page. A total size of two point three one two acres, per se, and then there's a couple of existing non-performing structures there on site. The joint property owner, the reason for this, NCTC, is seeking to purchase these parcels from the current property owner, which Mr. David Woodard, and we're seeking to do is remove those existing buildings in order to utilize the property. That's the, just the request. Again, property owner, Mr. David Woodard, here representing himself here before the legal official this evening. I do believe there's an attorney from NCTC here this evening as well. We found out between property owners by survey by mail, it was advertised in the house, and they were essentially standing on February eighth. This is a public address, it's been in the paper. This is a subject, such a property, as you see, is two parcels. These are, you know, those don't perform, so they're currently zoning there. I mentioned a little bit about a different study section, I think, that first was in the Idaho. Places like Ben Page, and Ben Page, and the store Ben Page, a few other places around the county that really bear our close look at in the next few years here. As we just work on other things to, to look and see what, what ways, what things the county can do to hurt, to develop in those areas, and revitalization, that kind of thing. But you have a lot of lots like this that are combined, value a third of the middle of lots size today. And so that's, that's an existing issue that, at some point, we will, we will need to, it's got to be a deal, yes. This is the subject property here, boundary survey, by Mr. Woodard, this is done by Jim Harrell. This is the subject property. It is in proximity to the floodplain, it's in that blue area, they see. These are the two parcels, so just to clarify what everything is, this is your floodway, hatch area. This is the one under your floodplain, here, the red, it's mapped, so we have a base level elevation, so very exact floodplain. This over here is approximate, we don't know exactly where the elevation is. And this over here is just kind of an FYI that the association puts on there, it's the bottom of your floodplain. So there's no written report basis for it, if that has anything different, or they build in that area. But, but it is a, it is a flood zone of, of, of a sort, doesn't require anything to be done. But you're also in that bed area, it does, across from this area, really, really have type restrictions. Context for the property, you see, again, is the historic Ben Page area here. See, there's a number of other commercial property, this is commercial services, and commercial neighborhood, I believe. This has been done in the area already. Purpose of the general commercial district is here on the screen, provides sufficient space in appropriate location for a range of commercial activities, should be well separated from residential districts. Commercial general, as you say, this is just the bulk of the farm, these will be non-performing lots, they are non-performing lots, and they will be non-performing lots. Again, the intended usage for parking for the utility that has, has an office, I didn't show that it was, I'm sorry. I believe that NCTC's office is attractive, across alley, so this would make the solar vehicles and that kind of thing. I don't believe this should be used as a lay down yard or anything industrial, as far as I know. But, 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 as I mentioned, the representatives are here, and the, 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 the utility representatives here, you can talk about that. So again, this is in the Ben Page community, the conference plan does support a rezoning of this location. The site side side is historical village center for the conference plan. Let's see where it is here. This is this ground area, this is our village center. There's a few levels scattered around the county, castings, frames, of, of, there in the gravel, I guess, is where that is. And, you know. We'll read the, the, the screen there, but it also makes a commercial, smaller residential lots. This is the zoning notice sign here. These are the properties, these are the big buildings here that are, it's something that we're not, not at this time. But as part of the rezoning, well, these are sold to NCTC, I believe they're intent is to take these out.
And truthfully, they've been commercial for over a hundred years. Maybe we can talk to CTC and saving a lot of them. So at that point, if, are there any questions regarding it? Commissioner Miller?
My first question was going to be, are they eligible that I may say that they're not like, I mean,
I think over the years, they've been many, many things. They actually, Matt Holmes and I think his grandfather.
My dad.
Your dad had a car dealership.
Well, he bought a stew baker, there was a garage, and he had his picture made from that in the garage.
So they've always been either a grocery store, or general store, or I think one point, one of them was a roofing facility back in the early 2000s, but they're salvageable, but it's going to take a lot of work. One?
I said I'm on that. So, okay, so have they had conditional use? Is that how they were operating?
Those buildings have a, so they predate the buildings that they use, has been in the commercial use, predates something about 20, 30 years probably, I think it's back in the 40s or 50s. And so they've done a variety of commercial uses there over the years. His sort of way with the county is looked at those kinds of things, things that go on in these kind of grandfathered areas. As long as you're not doing something that's way out there, totally crazy, that's a commercial use. So the local officials kind of consider they have a grandfather commercial use to the extent possible.
No, they're actually from the teens and the twenties if I'm not mistaken, and they're literally built right up to the curb. There's a little bit of a sidewalk, I think, maybe one, one, one was a gas station, and they literally pulled up on the street.
Gas stuff. You see a lot of that on the old, old highway 31, if you go by side B, the side B market up there, that's the exact same situation that, that busts the whole middle driveway. And that's another one that we worked with those over the years to utilize that grandfather status, a little nuisance stuff. I mean, they've got a, they've got some kind of a bagel type shop up there right now at that place. They had a gas station up there in the past, so you try, you try to work on some of that. But most of the time, the site's unlimited, that you wouldn't come in and do something there. I'm sure there's a safety tank somewhere, but what kind of condition it's in and what, what kind of environmental impact you, you may create there is, is, you know, maybe I see us.
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner.
My other question was, when you were showing some pictures of like, there was a house, is that a house across the street? Or is it another business?
That's a house right next to.
It's a house, under residential.
There's a house in that hill over.
Okay, wait about across the street?
That's the Masonic Lodge, just across the street.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Any motions?
Motion for number one, a positive proclamation of the commission.
We have a motion for number one approval, given a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Holmes. Any other questions with the motion? We'll call please.
Commissioner Holmes? Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Issa?
Yes.
Passing unanimously, thank you much. Move on to, I have number four, Heavenly Garage Door PUD Rezoning for a property that's on 1-9. Okay, Mr. Son.
Yes, sir. So this is a, some of the planning permission is already seen, I think this, this was to the planning permission back mostly in November for, for original reclamation. And they left a number of questions, I think, that I went back to, to the county commission in January, and Mr. Lee, who is representative on this project, there was additional information that could be provided, drainage questions, and city questions, and stuff like that, had been answered, or could be answered. And so, planning permission, or some of the county commissions, definitely referred back the plan. And so that's why it's back here, that's something that's been pretty common in the past years, when, when some of these big, big questions still remain, the county commission is not the kind of really answering the questions, as the planning commission changes. And so, so it was referred back, this property is owned by Heavenly Garage Doors LLC. Again, greenlit, designed, and listed as representative, it's a 6.7 acre property. They're requesting to construct an upper warehouse and materials inside out office for Garage Door Company. All of those requirements have been met, no thought by serve by mail, advertising the altitude, direction is there. This is an area of senior property, it's kind of a sensitive area to see. As we talked about, and as some length, we talked about the complaint, and that kind of thing, the complaint doesn't necessarily reflect how we want it at this location. It was about to part two, wanting that being completed, so there's not really a, the zoning doesn't match, in the area, it doesn't really match the fact that you've got a major arterial roadway running through the middle of the county. That's something that we've talked about, it's on the side sections that the county, based on the county officials will look at in the future. Again, this, I don't think that too much, but we've, we've done our diligence, industry, the county's, the county's department have met. We've got a hand, a paper. This is, they were in meetings, they've never brought it in for all of us, and there's a summary of that, they talked about their questions that people had. Here's the, this is the condition sheet from their plan sets, the concept plan sheets. Here's a zero in on their concept plan, their table of viable uses, you see it's pretty there. They are, as I mentioned, basically trying to utilize this warehouse, a little office space in there for, for the business to be able to, to take over, and then administrative paperwork and that kind of thing while they move these garage doors and that kind of thing. This is architectural elevations that, you see it's a primarily a brick building. A lot of it is anyway. They've answered any questions about the architecture of those. They have provided additional information since the planning commission meeting, which they didn't have, I believe, when it came to where you guys were first. There's a question about city, somebody said, I think, at the meeting, we're going to slide over, that kind of thing. They've provided a second permit for, for our file, for the subject property. Looks like they showed a four bedroom approval. They provided, made availability letter for the CTC and C, and water availability letter from, from water utilities. Now, obviously, connecting into the water line and all that is going to be the responsibility of that, and they will have to do that for a good building for me. This is another additional information, additional information, I've provided this very plan. There's a neighbor back to the, I guess back to the west, that had some concerns about drainage, wanted to make sure that we were going to take steps and ensure that we're going to make drainage issues. And so they have turned in a revised rating plan, showing more detail on the detention facility that they're going to construct in front of the facility. We see it here, this is, this is the detention facility, see the alley here. And they also furnish a drainage pool. And so, what this shows is, here's what, here's the, the amount of water that leaves the site now, and then that, essentially, this outfall. So whenever they, they design these things, they should have been off and getting off, leaving in here, but they got a plan around where the water leaves the site naturally, for the most part. And so, water now leaves the site here naturally, and this is, so this is the retention, you retain it in a low spot, and you capture it and release it to the same place where it was going before. If you don't do that, you essentially break the drainage law, where you discharge water then into a different location where it should go. And so water has to follow the natural flow, so it's a natural flow, in principle, with the, the large problem. And so, so they, my understanding is they designed this facility in a way that's going to continue to catch, capture water and release it where it naturally can anyway. What these calculations are intended to show is that pre-development, you have this much water flowing off the side of that outfall, and then post-development, you have this much. And so this is the difference, this number has to be negative for our stormwater distribution. So that means unless water is leaving the site after the development, per second, so QV per second leaving the site during these storm events. And so that satisfies the requirements of our stormwater protection. Commission plan, and then again, as I mentioned, it doesn't reflect how we want it at this location, so that's, that's something that we'll address at some point in the future. It's in the real place though, as I mentioned. The section of rated plan has been submitted, or the design resolution, they're not done, as, or they, they, if this is resuming as a group, they can come back to the planning commission with a detailed set of construction plans, erosion permission, set of control plans, drainage calculations, etc., within future cycles. Roads, you see there's an existing drive pit, or sorry, I think there's existing drive somewhere down here, they're proposing to utilize this right here. And, and they closed this one out for the plants, so that's part of our design resolution requirements for how we want it, we have access control requirements. You can't add additional drive pits, right? So if you put a new one in, you gotta take one away, so that's what they're proposing to do, this one will go away. And they'll utilize this, and what it does is it gives them access to both, both that land, south that lane, through this median cut. And so, that's exactly, and that'll, that'll have to be over by T-Dot, I'm sorry, T-Dot, and, and, and T-Dot will over your drive approach, and, and, and they'll, they'll, they'll bring everything away, it ensures that it's safe. But that'll, that'll also look better for the commission. So we have those pictures of what about, you see this is the subject property. Kind of see where, if it has that, we see the, where you're on that T-Dot is going to have some, probably the approach, but that work out with them. You see this is, this is the road, the right, kind of, I think I got a better picture, here this, this is the area where that'll be, be available down here. Make the pond or somewhere over here, and this is the road.
1-9.
This is about 1-9, that's your progress. So they're going to have to, to probably back it up on the road, that'd be probably pretty difficult for T-Dot. And of course, they're going to want to be able to do it in a way that's safe for traders and that kind of thing, just for their own safety. Some of the maintenance standards, does it apply to the complaint? The complaint is a lot of, this location doesn't reflect the how we want it. Number two, are they changing conditions? Yeah, I mean, the, the, the new how we want it at this location, there's that school involved that says that, that middle of the county there, you know, that is a, with that arterial avenue, it's also done in a way that's safe and is controlled. Additional commercial industrial type development through that, or, or it's not, not going to be desirable. Three is the rest of the administrative need, that would have been in the case of the need for this office in the area, that's certain shortages of commercial industries on the property out of the county, that's, that's certain, for, this is compatible with existing, for most uses from the county. It is located along Big Path, along that, which is a primary arterial roadway. As I mentioned, there are approved commercial uses, they're not resettled, but there is a long standing condition use permit that's been issued by the board of directors just behind this, for, for automotive repair facility, there's a, that runs a car repair business, right like this. Six, whether to be extended, would it be yours available prior to the availability of necessary services and infrastructure? Water services available for water utilities, civic services available to the city permit, and across a major arterial roadway. So infrastructure is there, so accounted for. Seven, would it result in the creation of isolated zoning districts related to the days of insurance zoning district? Would it create a planning and development, I'm a visitor, that, that, you know, was something that, you know, creating a commercial general or a light industrial zone, how, how, they can, where you can do any of those things, is not something you want to do out of the, the, I mean, but planning closely controlled planning and development is something that where you know all the uses, you know exactly what they're going to do, this is a little bit of a different story. And again, other commercial uses are in the vicinity as well. Would it result in any adverse impacts to the property values, the surrounding lands, as I said earlier, it's likely to be getting appraisals or expert testimony that indicates any adverse impacts to any of those property values, or anything like that? So you do have to have that if you want to, if you want to take that into consideration. And nine, would it have an negative impact on the environment? No, no, but I don't mind this, I think we've got a title there, although we've got a lot of things in the plan set. We will require that at the site when it's saved, I don't think they're paying much exterior lining. Stormwater must be addressed on site, civic permit has been provided, and they provided that culinary drainage point, just to show everything's going to work. And then, you know, access to the site is addressed as well through T-Dot. Just like I said before, this item will go to the, to the legislative meeting two times, and full county commission promote it. And if it's approved by the county commission, then it will be resumed at that time, and then they can come back with a cycle notification to you guys. Mr. Lee, this is completed by process, you know, just those words to be sure there. And so, assuming that, if there's not a reservation, there is example motion on the screen, provide a positive or negative recommendation, I'm going to defer it. Again, Mr. Lee, this is intended to not challenge any questions.
Goodness, Mr. Lee, say that and speak.
Just, Wade Lyles, one person, so, okay, thank you. I'm Wade Lyles, I'm the one that's had to join the property to this here. Of course, you know, we had all the rain and snow for the past few weeks, and we've got washed away again. But there's two pictures up there, one is the rear line of road, far as entrance. That's where the roads and the waste spring have washed away, they're all in raining, and it's not on a pitch which T-Dot had shut down, several hours had patched it. There's a wet waste spring there, it's, they're showing one, I, you know, almost, I mean, that just isn't I think it says. And I was involved with the construction out there, I really loved it, I, we say, well, water spots were, and also down there where they're going to be, looks good on paper, you know, with reality, where they're going to build a retention pond, whatever, it's a live way up there across.
Live way?
A live way, yes. So that can potentially be purple water for our cattle, I guess. Of course, we just got done repairing a dam, or a pond again. And we just live with it because you can't fix so much water there, you just have to fix it. I'm all back for it, you can take the pond, so my cattle water. But right there, where's that circle, if you go out there now, and you can't drive over, it's like, if you go there and hit the bottom of there, your car will go airborne. But there's several spots, there was 22 cars that afternoon, that morning, that had tire damage, which is good for me for my business, I've got a repair shop. I understand without business, but, you know, I feel sorry for people, because the road, there's several spots that's been fixed over the years, but you can't help but reflect. It is what it is, it's going to waste money, it's a thing. Track char with the rear, less of a wheel, I mean, there have been messes. But my biggest concern is, like I said, is the water. If it stays on that side, if you put a big pond on, I got care of it, I can deal with the square like that last time. But I just don't think it's going to work, I mean, who designs it? And you feel like the retention pond, like the water's got to go somewhere, and it's going to come off of those. Now, if you don't smile the pond, that land over there, let them put a price on it, and we walk away from it. The road rig is served to me, if you leave it down there, and you have those semilands come across there, that road's going to take it again, so we're back straight.
Because it's on.
So we're back straight.
On a road rig, yeah.
And throughout the summertime, you receive water, when it's, when we have the asphalt, you receive water, we usually do asphalt. It is what it is, it's by nature. But my biggest concern is water. I mean, we're, our pond over the pad, or since the bypass, we've cleaned it out three times with a track cover, because all the mud erosion comes across and washes down there. There's tiles on the road, oh, actually, on another piece of property, it's, I think, 2121 right there. And we have two big drainage tiles coming off of the highway also. And it's, yeah, when you're watering, but you can't control it, well, the nature just puts it, we're, that's what's with it. We continue, we're fixing roads, that's why I'm all back on it, that's how I'll always fix. I like to charge it back to the state, I do, it's that, I'm working. But like I said, I don't care what they do, but the water's an issue, the water's an issue. It's always been like that ever since they put the road there. There's a live way over there, it's a genuine problem, you just pour it down, and you couldn't see it, and walking around too dirty where it's at. It's still not working, that's how we missed off, still that the water's still over the years. But like I said, I just don't think, it looks good on paper, but I've seen too much stuff around the county, seeing these retention ponds, it's what it is. You've still got to take the water, it's got to go somewhere. I mean, if it continues to move there, we've got trees as well, we've got everything, so, but we just, we've dealt with it over the years, because you can't fix it. And I can't tell people to stay, and of course, it can come out, changes change it, it's just come back a mess, it's been touched off, so we can just fix it ourselves, just keep in mind that.
Thank you. Thank you. Questions?
Um, I have concerns. The first one would be, I think we talked about this before, on that nickel open, I think it's got a pretty high speed limit, right?
It's got a what?
Pretty high speed limit on that one, huh?
I think it's 55 there.
55 there, I know people do like, certainly, maybe like a bypass for the air change.
Yeah.
Pretty much, I mean, so that's my first concern is, is having.
It, it's not incredibly steep there.
It's not.
Or not, not at all.
So you can get it in out pretty easily.
Yeah.
But my other concern would be, you know, I'm hearing white wells, weather springs, I mean, they haven't been able to fix a water issue for multiple years, and I don't think going to a garage, an apartment lot, and then you're just, you put concrete on top of the ground, and you're just going to create more water. So I, I just think that this is just not the right spot for this, and we'll not be voting for this.
And, and any other questions?
I have one question.
Sure.
The gentleman who spoke was.
Mr. Lyles.
Were you saying that you believe the retention pond would back up into the other pond on your property?
Oh, no, the retention pond is not pond, it's probably here.
Okay, okay, I misunderstood, perfect, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Mr. Lyles, how does the water affect your automotive repair business? Because you're down at the bottom.
My automotive repair business is closer to the old one down there. There's a branch that runs, there's two branches that run through the property. The one closest to the property there we're talking about, escort gets into, runs down, goes into one pond, washes the dam out in Austin. It's erosion period. There's mud on one of the ponds, 20 foot deep, and you can hardly look down, there's mud this part of the top. The catalog, I drink around outside edge, which I've got a track on the come out here next two, three weeks, we're going to give it all out again. But we just live with it, it is what it is. I mean, erosion part of it, you can't fix it, but if we add two, it's going to wash it, it's going to wash it.
It's an incredibly tough piece of property, it's, it's a muller.
To be honest, with this, I've, I've owned catalog for years, been rolling my crew, and it was so swampy, it's got coral beds and everything else up there. We used to just hold the phone for sheer to just lay out on the hillside, they lay the bottom, they get stuck, that's how many of us. But it's, it's always been like that, I've been there since the farm was there, I've been there since it's all. My mom is our next girlfriend, she would be down here, she just, she says she wouldn't know what to say, and she knows it's a mess over there. But I could thought that piece of property when Mr. Lee had passed away, a whole lot cheaper than the property is worth now, and it wouldn't work in the best, because it's nothing that, it's just a swamp. And pile rescue across my property did too. Because when the property, when a house is condemned with asbestos stuff, and I told him, the boss property, I said, you don't get to tear this house down. When he tore it down, tore down the warehouse and covered it up, well, they need to be called out as hazardous plants. But I didn't say anything, it was on top of the hill, we had bollers and a fence, and of course, we had episode also, he took down the fence. And I had 1000 stairs get up on top of the hillside on 1-9, when I told him about the liability part of it, and we had to go back and put the fence back there.
Okay, okay. Well, Mr. Lee, you have some questions about water?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I can appreciate that, but most of the concerns that were brought up are concerns that affect this site predominantly. And in the development world, you've been in that yourself, maybe with a lot of money, and you can fix a lot of problems, or at least soft soil, things of that nature, mitigated with, it's not cheap, you know that, but it can be done without detrimental effects to the neighbor. So the soft soils on this side affect the property itself, not the owners. I could be sympathetic to what T-Dot did, I was actually working on this project for Rogers Group when it was being built, when 1-9 was being built. There's probably 40, 50 foot fill there, and the issue's on 1-9, and I did witness those firsthand, I drove by after the snow, the big puddles were there, so the cars backed up. And those are for destructibility issues of the time and the action. If it was out of the fill site, then, yeah, there's some issue, there's a 40, 50 foot fill over that area right there. And T-Dot's going to have to deal with the situation they created this summer and fix it. I don't believe that those were due to underlying issues, but that much fill over that particular area. The retention ponds, and guys, I've been handling bodies like this for 20 years, it's more or less always a concern for neighbors, and I can appreciate that, I understand it. We will comply with the county's regulations, what we've provided to you is, we actually ran through the cows to make sure that we have adequate area to provide a pond that will control the stormwater runoff. So the stormwater runoff is still going downhill, and Mr. Lyles' property is downhill of this. So he still will be receiving our stormwater, but it will not be coming at it any faster than it is right now, actually slower. In some ways, I don't even like making the argument, because no one actually believes it might, could, or, or we're decreasing that normal rainfall. My assessment is, is that there's so much offsite coming through the site, there's a colder right there, the white bypass thing, and we're not going to. It's possible that this project could help come out some if we can take that offsite water through our pond. And I think that it's something that we could be willing to do, with the time gone, see if we get to that point, to try to. It would be above and beyond the county's regulations, but it would be a small investment for our owner to do so. And so, as unrealistic as it may sound, this project may, could, with the county's oversight, help the runoff situation. The, where the T-Dot entrance is located, the grading plan Josh has right here sort of cuts off the, you know, probably two of them. The, we have consulted with T-Dot, we've also consulted with the traffic engineer, we're not just relocating the entrance because we want to, it's still there, but T-Dot said, you're putting it. And as far as access goes, the first, so the first, you know, 100 feet back is flat, so the road doesn't get steep until our tractor trailer is completely off the highway. So it's not like they're going to be slowing down and make turn movements. And the amount of traffic that this generates compared to what it's on, what I'm on right now, the tractor trailer traffic, minimal impacts, which is great. So I think it's an eyeing, and, and meeting, and situation with retail, well, we're not having more and more of these situations where people say, hey, you know, more group jobs, we understand it. What's the next excuse for this piece of property? The need, it could be a commercial property, Gallatin has a lack of inventory in commercial, industrial type properties as well, so we're having a lack of that. But other projects from, from this body will say, hey, we're going commercial. Anywhere in the county that would be suited for commercial on this major thoroughfare, and that's our, I mean, we feel like it's fitting, it's not out on a back road, it's not out. And, you know, it isn't somebody's backyard, and anywhere we go, we get so much backyard, but it is on a major thoroughfare, you've got great access, not impacted, it's minimal impact, except to the immediate neighbors' office. So we're willing to work and minimize those impacts as much as we possibly can. So I'll have to entertain any of your questions. Utilities are all there, we're breaking that, but the availability letters, are they going to be cheap? No, they're going to be expensive. This whole project's going to be expensive, but it's possible.
Yeah, it, it looks like you're building a, a fill for that driveway.
We are.
50 feet?
It's going, well, yeah, it's a lot of, it's going to be.
Yeah, to, to the south is a mountain, but it, it's very deep on, you know, it's exciting, the water flows.
It's going to be expensive too.
Are you concerned about? Are you concerned about the, the spring or the...
So if there is a well there, like, we can cap those off, and there is a downtime base, Tennessee State has a downtime base. Some wells show up on it, most wells show up on it. If it's been there as long as that house has been there, then may or may not, but if it's there, we can cap it off and not, certainly not put more into it. Uh, there probably, T-Dog may ask us to do a hydraulic termination, and if they do, we'll be able to do it. And it'll turn up being wetlands, springs, things of that nature. Uh, to be honest with you, there could be a potential of wetlands there, is what a lot of properties in this county. And if they are there, that can be detected, and so we will not, or it won't mitigate, to be frank.
And T-Dog would address any contamination or...
And even at the site plane level of the, this body, if the county feels like that, you know, they want to sort of jump out of the dirt there, they could require that next day. I believe you have that, I believe you do that, T-Dog definitely. Uh, and they have that in the last couple of years, especially really strict about making sure that, uh, if there's any kind of wetland activity, water. And if you look at this on the board, you'll see discolor, what I look for is discoloration in the grass, let you know that probably some water's in it. And my anticipation is that T-Dog's gonna make this.
As for me personally, I, I, I know that we need more businesses than rooftops or houses, and so I, I think you're right. But one-on-nine corridor is the ideal place, especially in the center of the county, for industrial and commercial. This is clearly industrial, Mr. Lyles has a, a, a com- commercial facility there where he does auto repair, so. I, I think ultimately it's going to be that, uh, but, um, I, I don't... Would, I, I guess at this point I'd ask to entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a, make a motion that we provide positive recommendation to the county commission.
Okay, we have a, a motion for approval number one, and we have a second.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Holmes. Go ahead, it's all coming in.
Commissioner Miller. Mr. Williams.
I'm standing.
And Mr. Isak.
I'm in favor. Just for clarity, if you know, if this will go through all the rigorous tests and, I don't want to affect any of Lyles' primary animals or anything else.
Right, right, yes, sir, it's, it'll, it'll have to go through, there we go, just gonna make sure this one through T-Dog. And so it'll go through the state, and they were thinking they're gonna go through that through, and then it's gonna go through our processes, well, everything. We will, and come back to this body, the reason why it's approved, and that is, uh, it would come back to this body at that time, uh, for a site plan approval. And, um, we, we do strive to make sure that if at all possible, uh, let's say we, you know, people will do things, though we do strive, if at all possible, to make sure that if there are existing issues, and those are not necessarily, you know, this develops, problem thick, but we do try to work, wait to find a way. This is what they, Marshall's good at, if you ever felt it's an office, we're good at, and trying to work with people to help the situation. And so if, if at all possible, that's what we'll do. Uh, but, you know, with issues about the well contamination and those kinds of things, trust me when I say that T-Dog, T-Dog, T-Dog will, will put eyes on that for sure. And, and they will, they will, they'll think of us, and that's absolutely. And so if there's not gonna be anything about this project, it's gonna be easy to release up, whether, because they got little T-Dot, T-Dog, and county, and who knows who else if they find one of them, something like that.
All right, the last issue about these is...
Yes, sir. The last thing I'll leave in there is a plaque applied, uh, for the Liberty Creek campus. And so, uh, this, so this is a project against food school, and a food section school in county, home lots, uh, various utility and ready-to-eachments, and approximately seven thousand thirty-six million feet of proposed public driveway, running food school campus. And so this property is located between Upper Station Camp, Greer Road, and Upper Lane, it's an industrial, I'm sorry, an institution, uh, which is a designation for, uh, government-owned buildings and that kind of thing, for my part. Uh, this property contains two hundred and fifty-seven point six acres in total. Um, it's owned by Southern County Schools, and the consultation would need, uh, both, there's three partnerships, it's owned by Southern County Schools and Southern County Government. It is joined now by both. Uh, project represented by the CSDG, there's here, attendance is even, um, a stormwater maintenance unit has been provided, um, as well, as part of this application. Uh, Creek one previously actually got a lot of, uh, for all the stormwater infrastructure on the site. Uh, maintenance, storm infrastructure is responsible to the school district, and this doesn't imply my office has to do, county has to specify the stations for every stormwater facility on every county on property, schools included, every year, as part of our permanent T-Dog. Uh, and so that, that will actually maintain those and, uh, keep them up. Um, this on the platform actually been approved before, already, it was approved back in July of twenty twenty-two, uh, but it wasn't reported within a year, so they didn't need a recording, so it is now expired. And so that recently did, uh, that rate is recorded at this time, I think White House was a long way from being ready to sign the plaque previously. It's the reason that it wasn't recorded back then, it definitely all the signatures on the plaque. Uh, and so it's expired for county subdivision regulations, which is why it's come back, back through. So the, the purpose of the subdivision plate this time is to, well, there's two reasons I've never enlisted the, the county commission. Um, first is, uh, for that, uh, to plaque to fix the utility units in order to formalize them. So the water facilities will definitely is allowed, water facility district to, again, provide services to the school campus. And it will allow them to discontinue the public haul arrangement that they have now, where they're, uh, they're collecting all the waste, uh, from the school, and they sell it next, and they, they haul it away. I guess if the Godfrey Plan is working. Second, the second purpose of the subdivision plaque is to complete a required step as required by state law, uh, toward the future dedication of the new road. We'll pack way as a public county management thoroughfare. And so it's clear, um, state law is clear that roads have to be platted, uh, prior to being accepted by the county. Uh, but I should know that approval of the plaque does not constitute approval of the road. This, this wood will have to be placered, and you're just showing the meets and bounds of, you're showing where it's at in space. Um, and then the acceptance process continues, uh, through the Highway Committee and the County Commission for Full Acceptance and County Maintenance. Uh, that will be done until the road is totally completed, uh, I think they've thrown out the name of the old main of twenty twenty-four, I bet it'll be later in the year, it always is. Uh, so sometime in the mid-late twenty twenty-four, I anticipate they'll come, they'll come to the Highway Committee and, and seek to start the process of turning this road over. Uh, but look back, if we prepare that road, and, and there's some, you know, failures that have occurred, and that road will be able to sink, something like that, with asphalt, so. Uh, fix all that, and then I put the final taco down, uh, prior to beginning that process. So here's the area review of the subdivision property. See, there's two very large tracks. Uh, this is a multi-cheat, it's a very, very large piece of property, but you don't normally see flats of this size, you know, the property's this large, it's pretty unusual. So they didn't have to divide it, just the scale of it, they had to divide it on multiple sheets. We did notice that, um, on the first page, they had all their park signatures, although the pages, they, they didn't propose on that, and those that those, uh, I don't care if they do that, but this... Um, we have White House Utility, that's a condition of purple that we have at their corner, so just to put it on, um... Uh, White House Utility District correspondents, um, when they're saying here in this letter, um, that they've sent, uh, is, is that, uh, that they're, they're requiring prior acceptance, looking at service being available, um, you either have to flat these ones or report severance, turn them by meets and bounds. Um, the county's reference, frankly, on any utilities once this has happened, I always wish the state law required all utilities must be planted in some way, because I'm trying to figure out where these is based on, the meets and bounds description is very different, but on the plant, it's easy. When they report by, uh, by meets and bounds, it's easy, it's very easy. Um, so what, what I believe is saying though is that there's, there's options, they can plaid, like they're doing here tonight, or they can report severance. Um, if we, if you want to work for White House Utilities, but they do have to have those easements full on the record, the rest are deeds. So they say, and I'm understanding, you know, prior to getting, to provide service. Cause they have the, of recording those easements actually allows them to accept infrastructure, and so they're not gonna run service service to something, or open it up, service service for something that won't get, right? That's my understanding, I do this speaking on some of that, um, and with, uh, CSDG, you guys can correct me if I'm wrong. And so we ended up asking to submit a, a, a piece of course forms, that those fellow have the, uh, the status of the road, and what they said is, uh, they, they, uh, the damage is on said, so to do, you know, construction, portion of the final top going, will be, um, hope to reduce, uh, damage to it, especially during construction of the little school. And then all the taco down, and then all finalize all the, the little pavement layers and that kind of thing, until, uh, they get done with schools, they're saying, oh, we did, did April twenty twenty-four. And then they're, uh, saying obviously that they'll be going to the Highway Department, and then they got the, of course, the Highway Committee, and the, the County Commission's part of the acceptance process. And so, uh, what I'm talking about, state law and that happening, this is what I'm talking about, uh, the bars plating, uh, for a road, kind of a road, it does have to be plated and one way or another, and this is, I'm just taking that text that I highlighted here, unless the road is ordered, it basically, they, they, it may not accept layout of a group grade pavement like any road in the Highway Department, uh, unless the road corresponds to this location and line, the road shown, that's on a subdivision plate approved by the county commission. Or a road plate made in the path by the county commission. So the road has to be plaid, and we're gonna go to that next step, which is the Highway Department, starting the Highway Committee, and then the County Commission. Um, we have this discussion all the time about approving the, the road on the platform, does that, does that fit us? We have developers sometimes to try to say that the county has assumed some responsibility for the road by group, a lot of plans, not the case. Um, approval of the plaque is just to acknowledge where the right way is, and that's the, and here's where, here's where that, that future road right away will be. The state law is clear, approval of the plaque by the county commission shall not be, any constitute or affect an acceptance, by the county or by the public, of the dedication of any road or the ground shall apply. So by approving this, the county commission is not accepting the road or anything like that, or taking all the maintenance responsibility for the Highway Department. Um, that comes later on in the process, this is just that first step, yeah, the plaid first, and then you go through the acceptance process. So we have our findings of factors subdivision plaques, um, first is in, in agreement with the, uh, the intent recommendations of the complaint. That's kind of like one-on-nine, that complaint, envision a school up there, that wasn't something that was, at, at that time, that they just envisioned all the complaint. Um, at, at some point, we get around to looking at updating the complaint, that school's there, so it'll need to be, that'll need to be shot and planned for accordingly. Um, but this is, it is consistent with zoning in general, and so we're something, uh, totally agree with you about it. Um, it is an unusual situation with a school on seven thousand liter feet of road, but, but it is, it is something that, that applies to our regulations. Uh, does not mean the purposes for zoning, of which zoning and severance exist, um, it does comply. Um, we, uh, as far as we know, does appear to comply, we have the comments about the, the additional signature needed to be added, the sheets of the plaque. Uh, but it does appear to follow zoning and subdivision regulations. Um, subdivision has to, uh, will not create adverse effects on ongoing property owners. Um, that's, you know, some engineering responsibilities, that's where this is a little bit different than your typical project, um, that, uh, drainage and design and that kind of stuff is done, you know, by the sources of sales or outside of you necessarily, but, but that said, this, this plaque does require the signature of the engineer record, um, certified by the engineer who designed the plaque. And so, uh, no, uh, beyond more ideological discussion, I don't, I don't see any adverse effects. And number four, no one property owner, smaller than property owner benefit for, for, for the national public, and so this is county-owned property. And so it's, it's county, county-owned, by the school system, and the, and the county that's above the road, uh, that will provide connectivity through the school site. And so it would benefit one individual property owner anyway, it's not that we can think of. So next steps, uh, after approval, well, this body's approved, uh, it can be signed and reported, and so as a center of reporting, the plaque will form a lot of the dimensions of the future public right away, and all utility and drainage units. Uh, reporting those easements will allow White House Utilities, again, providing a little service to the campus, uh, for White House Utilities. Uh, after reporting on the final plaque, the road will be placed on the road committee agenda, uh, upon completion of the preparation. And so again, once the repairs are done, and the final coat asphalt is done, and then the, the Highway Committee, uh, to take it this, over this level road. If it is on this one road, it is accepted as a level road, and then they file a highway department. So a proper inspection by the road committee will be on the full county commission for acceptance. So Mr. Chairman, is there any motions on the screen, wanting to find the requirements to approve, uh, to deny, based on some, uh, non-compliance, uh, or to prefer it? And again, uh, the chat representatives from, uh, CSDG here, right here, have a tendency to answer questions.
Do we have, do we have anybody speaking to this here?
This one, this one isn't double here necessarily, but if you, you guys have suspended the rules, uh, in the past, and a lot of folks have spoken on that, so if somebody wants to do that.
Okay, good. Would I have an entertaining motion to suspend the rules?
Okay.
Second, by Commissioner Holmes.
We got a matter of favor.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm in favor, it's, I'm gonna say that, uh, opposed.
You could say to me, like, not notice, um, Kevin Bader, for, for everybody who, um, I just find it interesting. You know, I had reservations when we built this school and we bought this land, putting a middle school right underneath a five-hundred kilobolt high tension wire line, but, um, i- is, is it normal to have a plaque approved after we've already been building on it for the last several years? Um, you know, I mean, I look at the, the details, and maybe I, my vision isn't what it used to be, but I don't see some of the original structure, like the house that was there. Um, I, I mean, it seems to me as if, my, my, my spidey senses are going off, what's going on here? You know, I kind of get the impression that this should have been done years ago, when the school was originally approved, before they started even digging. Um, now they're trying to just push something through, and I'm just a little nervous about it, so, um, I, you know, you folks are into a lot more than I am. I would be very diligent, we take this slowly, um, we, we have a long history of, of things kind of just being done in the middle of the night, and... That's all I have to say, thank you.
Does anybody else want to go?
Linda Kelly, seven-one Upper Station Camp, Greer Road, and I can prolong kind of what he's saying. All this debacle about the street work, all this time, I didn't even know that this was what the end result was gonna be. The White House utility, um, was gonna be handled as a work in the same way, about the whole plaque. The houses on there, um, was a big part of Ann's wheel, and it's been left just to go to shadows. Just seemed like this whole thing has not been thought through like a normal person would think it through. So I would hope... So I would hope to depart this at minimal, if not enough.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we'll go, we'll go back in session. Questions with anybody? Can we show the votes?
I need a little more information, Josh, if you can, if you can. You said this was actually approved in July twenty twenty two. I mean, what, what happened, was it just not recorded? Could it not be recorded because of the sewer line, what happened?
Yeah, it is, ma'am, I think so. I think Mr. Harrison or something like that want to correct me, but my understanding, they took it through, it had been approved. But White House utilities is very exacting in their standards as far as when they've signed the plan. Everything has to be done, inspected, warranted, and all that. And so I think they, and again, this is my understanding, is they've, they've gotten to that point finally officially where it's actually, everything's ready to go. And so they were not ready to get that done, White House utilities would not have signed the plan back then. And so it basically sat for over a year, and then just expired and lapsed. And so now it's several months past, you know, being lapsed. And so now we're, White House utilities ready, I believe the infrastructure is in, has been inspected by White House utilities, and is ready for acceptance. And so as part of that acceptance process, as you got to saying before, they sign subdivision plans all the time. And so this is, this is the one that they would need to sign for water and service structure within the site. So instead of going off site, the other reason, it's not less than, we'll take care of a long time ago, as you got to quote, but this is within the school campus site, so all those easements that are there.
And what, what were you talking about, not some?
Well, I'm sure, I mean, the, the.
So you're missing some signature?
Oh, no, 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 the, they just, when they did the plan here, and this is just administrative, I'm sorry. On the first page, we had several, you said there were signature blocks on the bottom. Then when I go to this page, you say there's a few missing. And so we understand, you know, have to add several signature blocks. And they just didn't, they get on the other pages of the plan. So that's just something that would need to be corrected. That's one of our four owners requirements is that I require every page of every plat to be signed. Some places don't do that, but I, I like every single page should be signed that way. I'm sure that my page hasn't been substituted, basically, and then recorded. And so we require everyone to be signed by every single person that needs to sign.
I just have just a question, and I, and I don't know if it matters a lot, but the brown house. Is it on there or not just missing? Does it need to be on there if it's a final plat?
It, there's, so if, again, somebody may be correct if I'm wrong, but I think, so the brown house property is, is this little parcel right here, right? This little segment, and if you look, you can see a little driveway, there's an easement that goes up to it, right? It goes off of, I'm saying here. And, and so I don't know whether it's on the plan or not. I didn't, I haven't seen, I didn't, I'll be honest, I didn't, that came up as an issue here in the last day or two. I didn't look at it, look for it, when we did the initial review. And so I might just be missing it on the plat. But that is something that probably does need to be shown, just that, not the fact that it's a separate house, because it is a separate parcel. It's big, it is a separate parcel, but that parcel doesn't need to be indicated on the plat for sure. It's not on there somewhere. And again, the, the layout of this is unusual, it's rare to see a light by the crossfire, she's, she just has such a huge site. And so that, that is something that I think that we missed, or we're doing. And Mr. Schneider, in the general, if I'm wrong, it is on there.
Yes, it is on, too. It's probably sealed. This is the stream buffer, and a little bar, can you do a little?
That thing, is that it?
We go down, right there.
That's it? Is, is, the, 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 is this, is this here, or is this, what, we learned, this area? And is that the parcel that was just mentioned itself?
Ah, often, I believe it's the structure itself.
So on that, I think I'm kind of just going on that. So like, in the deed, I did notice that the parcel would reserve, is that a point? Eight three one acre parcel or something like that, with the easement and all that. And I don't want to get way off, but is there a different ownership or agreement or something with that?
That was a life estate. So basically, I believe, I'm not aware of the status, but what I understand, life estate is he had a house, and once he passed away, then he goes to the owner of the deed itself.
I guess, okay. And so on both of those deeds, it's indicated as being owned by Southern County Schools and Southern County Department, right? I don't know, I've never read that, which I don't know, what do you think, I would say it's a, it's a, or anything.
Can we suspend the rules now, or are you trying to speak to?
I'm not making, I'm making it up.
Mr. Chairman, can we do a pop out with the deed description for that, on that plat?
Yes, sir, just give me, give me just a, just a name. You don't see the deed, you said?
No, the honest thing is, it's part of the, and there'd be a pop out with that description of the pop out.
Like, like an inset or something, or? Is, so here's, this is more of a survey question. Mr. Chairman, you found me asking, Mr. Schneider, this is, should that, should that parcel be shown as it is in the deed, in the easement and all that? Or does that essentially go away as well, when this hits the total deed? Does that, does that need to be reflected as it, as it is in the deed? Is there a safer signature, if I remember right?
Yes. As far as I've understood it, is that egress, egress, and life estate are part of, in that deed, it says it's a life estate. Which would mean that Mr. Brown would have control of that egress, egress, in that small parcel. For it is like, if he passed away in twenty sixteen. And from what I understand, then that even is all part of the overall school.
And so there is no easement to oneself, basically, right? So this, the easement goes away as part of that?
I don't agree with that. Because it became a separate conveyance once it got carved out, so it's got to be addressed, and that easement, it runs with the land, it can't be landlocked. So there's several issues here. That's why I would like this to be addressed as it was prior to his death, just so that we know exactly what we're talking about, when, when and if this comes up again, for other reasons.
Is, this was from two separate tracks. And so this final plat map gets rid of that divider between the two tracks, and makes this one large contiguous piece of property?
No, sir, I think the, the, the boundary, the property boundaries would be the two big tracks. There's like a hundred twenty acre track, or a hundred ten and a hundred thirty acre track. Those, those property lines remain the same. The swervers have still been, have still been fighting those two lots. Again, the, the lots are really kind of secondary, let's be polite, that the right of way and the easements that go with the right of way and under the right of way, I think that's purpose of the plot.
Should that property line not be indicated on the final plat?
Oh, I believe it is. I believe, I believe the property line between the two big, you're talking about the one and two big tracks, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So.
So, Judge, also, this, what it is, is we are, yes, we are removing the lot lines in two. What we're doing is consolidating it into a northern lot, and that's right of way north of the center, and that's up.
That's right, okay, that's up, yes, okay. So I'm, I'm sorry about that, so, so this is what you have to add, right? What you have is what you will have, is like here, lot one north will pack way up, and then here, lot two south will pack way up.
Okay, so everything south and will pack way is, is lot two. I'm, you know, we're in the middle of, of an issue here with the park. And I think we don't know what is going to be the resolve with, that I think it's twenty five acres or something to that effect. We know that the responsibilities by Mr. Brown's will said that the park and the jewel, or the house, is going to be the responsibility of the county. Whereas the schools are the responsibility, the school district. And I know there's the conversation that the school district will, are talking about maintaining it. But there's also some documentation that needs to be investigated, that says the county provides twenty five thousand dollars a year for that maintenance. And I'm just concerned that with all the question marks with this, that we're not ready to approve a final plat. Mr. Rogers, did you, did you want to speak?
Sure, I'm not trying to get in my out order myself, I'm ordered.
Do we need to suspend the rules? Wait a second, second, on the favor, I oppose.
My question would be, I guess, is, you, you argued in the other rabbit trail, of the plat, where, where does one end and one stop, or begin? And then where does the park go? And then I guess the other question would be is, how does this all tie together? If we're saying this is the final plat, I still think we need to see the, again, I'm not an attorney, but I do kind of see where legal's coming from of, when you, when you put that in a separate trust, and it's, it's a separate piece of property. I don't think it would just dissolve itself and go away if you made another entity, if you will. Three, you have now three prongs instead of two with this property, so. And if I, and y'all are in another, another tough spot tonight, but if, if I was in y'all's spot, I think I would have to say no. Because it's just, it's too many questions and too many variables there. And I'm not a county commissioner, and I've not had to answer for any that you guys have had, but looking at this and the situation that we're in, I think we really need to be clear of a boundary, easements, everything that's here, egress, egress, or e, whatever, those, those presses. To make sure those are there on the, on the property and are shown as, as though they should be. Because if not, I'm afraid we're going to find ourselves in a bigger mess later on. So that's all she says.
Thank you, Commissioner, we'll go back into session here. I agree with you, I, I think there are a lot more questions than answers.
We're certainly, if we're here, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry.
Defer.
Defer.
Motion to defer.
I want to discuss. I want to discuss.
Oh, you're, second, and, and now to discuss it?
Sure.
Okay, so we have a, a motion and a second discussion, Commissioner.
There's, there's been a lot going on in the past few weeks, as you said, with, with questions on the park and who's, whatever. So with the park and that house, so to me, and not being an only, this looks like a complete political move to try this, to deny this, to say that we are going to hold up a sewer being opened to the school. Even though for approximately two years, the school's been open with no sewer. So I think it's political games. The plat does not show the park, and if that was the house, there's no way to identify it on that plat now. I'm not comfortable with it, but if we defer it, then they're going to say we're holding up the connection of the sewer. So darn if you do, and darn if you don't.
Any other statements?
Can I just ask you a question?
Absolutely.
So if there were a hundred some odd acres and a hundred some odd acres, and there's three hundred some odd acres to the whole property, does White House utility only want two hundred some odd acres in this plat? What happens to the rest of, the rest of the land?
No, I think the, the total of the property is, is two hundred fifty seven, two hundred fifty seven acres overall. And I think the one, the one track is valid, I guess.
Maybe I'll have to.
Yeah, it's, it's.
I thought there were three hundred and some change.
I don't think so, no, ma'am, I think, I think it's a hundred and twenty plus a hundred and forty, give or take, it's, you know, about two hundred sixty acres. I think it's all there, yeah, and, and so the.
I, I know that's what that says on that paper. But the total property from the beginning, and I keep, I just thought it was three hundred and some change, three fifty. I don't know this number off the top of my head, and I can be wrong.
I, I looked at the deed today, I, I have got some problems with this, I was supposed to look at the deed, I don't know off memory, but the one track was a hundred and ten, a hundred and seventeen, it's over there, the other was a hundred and forty something. So it ends up being about two hundred sixty, you're right.
Thank you.
I would like to ask Attorney Lawrence to. Do you have any other questions? I understand that you're concerned about the easement, for egress, egress, and I, too. I'm very concerned that we're walking into another mess, like so many things in this county, where we have co-ownership and co-responsibilities. And we're, we're making another one where we've been trying to get rid of some of these messes. I, I'm certainly not comfortable approving this. And I, I understand Commissioner Miller's concerns about maybe falling into a political pot here, but I, I'm not comfortable approving it. So I, I, we, we do have a motion on the floor, and we have a second. So if there are no other questions, I do ask, if we go ahead and vote on that.
Did you still want me to comment?
If you, if you've got a comment, this, you sit there and look at here, because I'm really no longer here.
Can you hear me, is this thing on?
Yeah, it is.
We've been hit with a couple of issues, so now we're in a, I, I feel that this commission's in a position to have, being forced to play both sides of the fence. There's the issue we dealt with with item one, and that works for item one, it gives, I guess, people that want to bring up item one and get their point across. Then, then apply that same criteria to this, what are we supposed to do? So, so that's question number one. The other is, just in the past couple of days, I've received quite a bit of questions and documents that tell me that the school board is not wanting to even open up dialogue with my office to structure this park. So I don't know what their intent is with this, I don't know if it's going to affect the park, it may not affect it at all. So that's, that's issue number two. Number three is, the school board had all this time to get this stuff put through, didn't put it through, now they're last meeting it, and I think the time is rather convenient. It, when it's being pushed through, I, I feel like this is, or revisiting the bleachers that pick in, is what this is going to turn into. So if I had a, a private client come up to me and we were discussing real estate issues, and this is what we were discussing, I would tell the other side, we need more time. We've got to get a better game plan together, I just can't be given half the information or no information expected to go. But I'm not elected, unfortunately, you all have to get this, but that's how I would advise you.
Thank you. Thank you. So, it, it, it sounds to me like a deferral is a reasonable thing to do, we, we have that motion on the floor and a second, go ahead and roll the call, Captain.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Holmes? Commissioner Williams? Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Okay, let's see, unanimous, the item will be deferred. Go ahead, gentlemen.
Next out, we had, it was just some administrative approvals, I believe, I'll need to get it, or in the, in the package, everybody can see, all the administrative work that we've been seeing, we've probably been here the last couple of months, in the mind fast, and that kind of thing, and after that, or if it's update, I think we have been here long enough, and I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, you guys, maybe later, so I, I have no update this one.
Commissioner, Mr. Jefferson?
On the favor? Aye. Aye. As you unanimous, we'll just go on.